All right, we'll call the City Council regular meeting agenda for Monday, November the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five to order at six thirty-four P. M. With that, if you'll all please rise, I'll lead us in an invocation followed by pledges by Council Member Coza. Heavenly Father, we just want to come and start this meeting off with inviting you to be a part of it. We're grateful to be living in a country where we have the opportunity to come and discuss our community, to come and discuss the issues facing our community one-on-one in a setting like this. But we want to invite you to be a part of that and ask you to be the leader through this meeting. Be a part of it. Guide us, direct us, give us the opportunity to disseminate great information, but also receive information, make wise decisions based on our community, and make good decisions for the future of our community. Father, every time we gather, we always want to be reminded to pray for every single one of our men and women that put on a uniform and go as a first responder right here in Pearland. Thank you for what they do. Thank you each and every day for how they get out and protect us, they serve us. And in some cases, they do get into harm's way, and we want to thank you, Father, for them and ask you to protect them, ask you to guide them, ask you to be with them even in quick decisions that they may have to make. And as always, Father, for the men and women in our military around the globe that protect the greatest nation on the planet. Thank you for their lives. Thank you for their opportunity that they have to serve our country and the willingness to put their lives on the line if need be. Father, again, be with us as we deliberate the business of this city in Christ's name I pray. Amen. All right. Want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. We've been inundated by green people, sitting in the back. No, we have the next class for our Pearland Leadership Class through our Chamber of Commerce. All of these fine individuals are right here in the back. Jim, you'll say a few words, but we want to thank them for coming out. They spent all day at the city, and what a great day I hear.
Thank you, Mayor Jim Johnson. On behalf of the Pearland Chamber and the Leadership Pearland Foundation, this is the eighteenth Leadership Pearland Class that over the next ten months, they will spend time learning about our businesses, our community, our fire department, our nonprofits, our education, our county, and our state. And they continue to be a program that develops the next leaders of Pearland. I want to thank alumni in the room like Council Member Carbone, one of our alumni of this great program, as it continues to develop fantastic leaders. Mayor, if it'd be okay, I'd love for them to just quickly introduce themselves. And we know you have a big agenda tonight, but we'll let them all introduce themselves real quick. And thank you for your time. And thank you to the city staff for allowing them to spend the day learning about the city of Pearland. So I'm just gonna have them introduce themselves, and they'll go back to the end of the line.
Hello, Greg Neal, Director of Branch Operations for TDECU.
Kacha Copeland, Planning Manager, City of Pearland.
Why don't y'all stand that mic up just a little bit?
Raquel Hammond, Director of Finance, Pearland Chamber.
Patricia Growth, Business and Operations Manager at Alvin College West.
Monica Coleman, the Communications Director for HCA Houston Healthcare.
Shamia Caesar, Chief Nursing Officer, Memorial Hermann Pearland.
Norma Martinez, Executive Director for Gulf Coast Casa.
Mercy Woods, Co-Owner of The Right Choice Financial and Tax Service.
One Pledge, Lieutenant, Special Operations, Pearland PD.
William Trevino, Director of Testing at Alvin College.
Kimberly Barfield, Director of Pearland ISD Education Foundation.
And Brayna Nikopoulos, Department Chair of Life Sciences, Sanderson College South Campus.
Anne Boe, MIV Project Manager at Endresenhouser.
Lisa Termorez-Hayson, Procurement Manager for the City of Pearland.
Adrian Pettis, Vice President, Pearland EDC.
Mayor, Council, this is your Leadership Class of two thousand and twenty-six. We hope to see you at the graduation in June of this next year. Thank you for the time. Thank you to the city staff. They won't be hanging out with council. Please don't be offended by that. They've already all attended a meeting before this, so they knew what was going on before that. Again, thank you to the city staff for their time, and thank you for letting me be recognized. Have a great night.
All right, the room will be less green now, so. Green with envy. So, as we move on, roll call and certification of quorum. Madam Secretary, I'll certify. We have a quorum present as all members of the council are here. So with that, we'll move to citizens' comments. I believe we had one citizen signed up to speak for general comments. All the others are signed up to speak on a specific item. When we get to that specific item, we'll call your name in the course of those public hearings and bring you up to the podium. So with that, Mayor Protem, if you'll introduce our speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tommy Echols, if you'll make your way to the podium, state your name for the record. And you have three minutes, sir. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem and council members. My name is Tommy Echols, a resident in Pearland, Texas, three thousand and eight Green Tea Drive. I'm here today to speak just a few moments. I believe you, council members, mayor, have press release. I won't read it verbatim, since you have it. Just to acknowledge today that I am throwing my hat in to run for City Council in the May election. I've got some initiatives that I want to see happen and continue to happen. And the main one of that, Mayor, is I want to put up the boots, latch up the bootstraps, and get on your train that you started with having parks for people that need inclusivity. The mentally and physically handicapped, they need a park to go to. And I want to back up and say, Mayor, I'm on board with you. Also, I want to see our roads continue to be improved. Also, I want to see the council continue to work as a team as they have in this past year and a half that I've been part of P and Z. So thank you very much. A good evening.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate those comments. Ms. Bright, you signed up for general comments, but I think you want to talk about new business item number two. I don't know where you are. Bryant? Amy Bryant? Hmm? She outside? She here in the room? Okay, so you want to speak on new business item number two, correct? Okay, we'll call you up at that point then. Yeah, no problem. Just wanted to make sure. With that, that's all public comments for now.
Good deal. With that, we'll move forward to consent agenda. Anybody want to remove A or B? So I don't see anybody moving in that direction. Mr. Coza, if you would present consent agenda items A and B for consideration?
Certainly, Mayor. Consideration possible action on the consent agenda items A and B. So moved.
Second?
We have a motion of second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Chavedia?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Fernandez?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Barom?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. When you have back-to-back meetings, week to week, we end up with very small consent agenda on the second one. So with that, there are no matters removed from consent agenda. Moving to public hearing number one. I believe Martin's got the first one. Martin, if you would read into the record the reason for the public hearing and move right into staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. For this first public hearing, this is a request by Austin Britt, applicant on behalf of Anthony Giuliani, owner, for approval of a conditional use permit for restaurant with drive-through service use within the Neighborhood Services zoning District on one point one eight nine acres of land. This property is generally located at thirty-two oh-three Dixie Farm Road here in Pearland. So with that, the applicant is requesting to construct a four thousand four hundred and thirty-nine square foot fast-food restaurant. This would include a drive-through service associated with it and have parking and landscaping. As this property is in the Neighborhood Services District, restaurant use requires approval of a conditional use permit. We sent out public notice and comment for everyone within two hundred feet, and then had notification signs placed on the property with that to date, closing at about two o'clock this afternoon. We had written comment in support and against, nineteen against, one in favor. And then here is a map of the zoning of the property and surrounding land uses. You can see this is about mid-block within that Neighborhood Services zoned property, and is surrounded by Walmart, Home Depot, some undeveloped property, and then a proposed Dollar Tree site towards the south. Taking a look at the future land use plan, the future land use calls for commercial center, which restaurants are a primary land use within the commercial center place type. Here's a look at the site plan that is proposed, and then a zoom in of that plan with the landscaping highlighted, and then some facade renderings that are proposed. And with this, in staff's analysis, this meets five and may meet two other established criteria for approval of the conditional use permit. There are conditions associated with those two that may meet to help them get towards meeting and being in compliance. This conditional use permit is consistent with the comp plan, the future land use, thoroughfare, and all of our plans. However, a full traffic impact analysis is likely required. With that, staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions: that the exterior building facades shall be developed in substantial conformance with materials as depicted in the facade renderings, and all corridor overlay district requirements for articulation met. That a hedgerow be provided to screen a minimum of thirty-five percent of the length of the parking lot along the southwestern property line in accordance with UDC Section four-point two-point-two-point-four D two. The required side lot screening may be grouped or dispersed randomly. That cross access be provided to Lot One to the northeast as required by the Dixie Farm Commercial Subdivision Platte. That gravel be limited to one hundred and seventy-two square feet as shown on the landscape plan. This is where the menu board island is located. And then any infrastructure improvements which result from the traffic impact analysis shall be provided by the developer. These conditions were proposed to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they voted five to one recommending approval of the CUP with staff's recommended conditions. With that, Mayor, I'll pass back to you.
Thank you for that. I see Mr. Britt here. Do you have a presentation for us?
I do, yes, sir.
Just go ahead for the record. Give us your name for the record.
Sure. So my name is actually Connor McBride. I work with Austin Britt, who submitted this application. So I am the civil engineer for the applicant, Connor McBride, with Pate Dawson Engineers. And I will make this brief because a lot of the things have already been touched on. But to share another vicinity map, we are located off of Dixie Farm Road across from the Walmart there next to the depot and the Panda as well across the street. With this development, we would be proposing a new fast-food restaurant, obviously McDonald's, two drive-through lanes, currently proposing fifty parking spaces, including some specialty stalls such as mobile order, the McDelivery, and the pull-forward stalls. The only access would be from Dixie Farm Road by a access road, which I'll show you here on this next slide, which comes off of Dixie Farm Road. And it continues to the bottom of the page there, to the page right, but it does not extend to connect to any other existing roadways. That is just an access road currently for this development. In the rear of the property, it's planned for a detention basin. So as previously mentioned, currently zoned to Neighborhood Services, and restaurants with a drive-through are an allowable use with the approval of a conditional use permit. And there again, we've already seen this. Here you can see the McDonald's track overlaid and that red hatch next to the where the Dollar Tree is permitted but not yet built. And just to highlight some adjacent development, across the street, there's a Panda Express, Walmart next to Home Depot, and then at the intersection with Broadway, there are other fast-food restaurants with drive-throughs such as Raising Canes, Jack in the Box, Chick the Life. And to touch on some benefits to the community, obviously positive tax revenue, employment opportunities, owner-operator will be a small business owner within the community, and they have the option and ability to support, provide support for local initiatives through partnerships, through organizations such as but not limited to Ronald McDonald House charities. The site will be ADA accessible, compliant, up-to-date, brand-new, you know, strong, good lighting for the entire development and entire property. And I believe, and it's typical for McDonald's to be a draw for other local businesses. They're frequently the anchor of a development. And that traffic, which I'll touch on here in a second, should be, should be a draw for other surrounding businesses as well. And here's my contact information if you have any questions. There were some concerns brought up at the P and Z meeting by some citizens. I appreciate hearing that and to let you know that, you know, that was heard. Some of the things that I heard were concerns about traffic, which is certainly a fair, you know, topic to bring up. And to just give everyone an update, we had prepared a full TIA and submitted that to the city for review. We just recently received our first round of comments. Clearly, by the comments, the city is closely reviewing, as they should, this analysis that we've prepared. And we have a meeting scheduled actually for tomorrow morning, or Wednesday morning, sorry, to discuss those comments. So that's, that's certainly something that we're taking into consideration closely. I also heard some concerns about safety. To reiterate, some of the things we can do to help mitigate those concerns, you know, the lot will be well-lit. And on the other side of that, I don't, I guess I want to highlight that closest to us is a Home Depot. On the other side of us, there's the Dollar Tree, and then on the, while it plans south, opposite of Dixie Farm, it's a currently undeveloped area planned for the detention basin. So those lights hopefully won't pose a concern about shining into somebody's house. You know, there's buffers on all sides, all sides there. And then finally, the road, the access road that the, the road, the access road that's proposed does not connect to any other neighborhoods for concerns for maybe cut-through traffic. So with that, that's the presentation I have for you today.
Thank you for that, and thank you for being here tonight, Connor. When I, we're going to those wish to speak for and against this proposed request, I'm going to go ahead and call the names of those who have already signed up to speak, but it's not limited to that. So Mayor Protim, if you'll deliver those first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris Puente. Saying that right? All right, make your way to the podium and state your name for the record. Don't have to state your address anymore, just state your name. And you have three minutes. We got several, so we're going to kind of line some people up. Pat Lopez and Robert Newlin, if y'all want to be right behind Mr. Puente and take it away, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Chris. We've not met. You've seen my house. It was in the zoomed-in view of the property there. Our opposition to the proposal can basically be summed up, three, two, one, three facts about it. Two things that we're kind of surprised about, and one question we have for you guys, right? So the first fact is that Dixie Farm and 518 is an incredibly congested intersection. So much so, it recently received a complete facelift to add capacity, and it's still overwhelmed at times during peak traffic. Adding a high-volume, high-turnover drive-through restaurant there is going to make exacerbate an already kind of overly congested area. But secondly, that same thing is going to add to my neighborhood a safety concern. We're already, because of that intersection, accustomed to people cutting through the neighborhood. It seems when you use a neighborhood you don't live in as a thoroughfare, that speed limits, stop signs, those become optional. I worry about the 10-year-old over there on his bike in the street. If we're going to add, again, another reason for people to cut through, I can't, I have to be against that. The third thing is, the third fact of the matter is just, it's just the smell. Imagine sitting in your backyard on a beautiful night like tonight, and depending on which way the wind blows, you might be, you know, awash in that acrid, like, cheap beef french fry smell that emanates from these guys, these places. So the thing that we're kind of surprised about is that this is even a thing at all. As, as my man pointed out, within a quarter-mile radius, we have drive-through, fast food in the way of like Panda Express, Chick-fil-A, Canes, about to have a Whataburger in a couple of weeks, Jack in the Box. I fail to see how this adds to the neighborhood with what we already have. The second thing I'm surprised about is how quickly and easily P&amp;Z approved this. They acknowledged that it doesn't meet the, fully meet the traffic criteria of the Unified Development Code. It, it was opposed by 100% of the correspondence that they received and posted. So, so that's a surprising. So I'll leave you with this. I'm, I'm going to get out of my time here. The question that we just have is, is if, if, if your house was in that zoomed-in plat there, if, if, if somebody that, like you love, like your family or your friends, or their house was there, would you be so quick to approve? In other words, if this proposal wouldn't be good enough for that proximity to you, then why would you do that to us? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lopez, state your name. You got three minutes. Thank you.
Howdy. I'm Pat Lopez, 3209 Dixie Farm Road, probably 300 feet from where the access drive will be. And obviously, I'm opposed to it. And I'm opposed to it not just strictly because it's a McDonald's or something of that nature. I'm going to give you all a little quick history. In 2016, the city worked with the applicant to accomplish a senior living facility, okay? In 2018, there was a request for the zoning change to be commercial that was denied, okay, by council. Okay, the Neighborhood Service was approved based on the applicant's proposal of a senior living facility, okay? It fits the zoning, all right? So then in July 10 of 2025, there was a plat approved, a development with four lots and a detention reserve. These lots were based on the McDonald's footprint. It's very simple. When you evaluate, you can look at it. I have a little experience in this world. So the applicant knows that the current zoning is Neighborhood Service. And to have a McDonald's, he were required to get the CUP, which is basically placing a commercial zoning and overriding the, the Neighborhood Service. Placing a, a commercial zoning in the center of Neighborhood Service. You're going to have one on the north, one on the south. Okay, so that appears to be a little bit of spot zoning for me. But anyway, but I'm opposed to the CUP based on the traffic. I don't think there's been a true evaluation of the traffic study. The impact is not just McDonald's. The impact is the nine-plus acres, okay? There's not been a valuation of that access drive that accommodates for the Lot 1, which is .82 acres, Lot 2, which is McDonald's, which is estimated to be 1,000 to 2,000 cars a day. That's 1.1 acres. Lot 3, which is the access drive, and the back of it's still unknown, is 5.5 acres. The Lot 4 is 1.1 acres, I guess is the Dollar Store. But there's not been a valuation on, on the full impact of what this nine acres is going to do, the Dixie Farm Road. Second item is, well, I guess, just the McDonald's doesn't fit, for everything that everybody else is saying. My concern really is that the development in general, the nine acres, I know we're talking about this specific CUP, but the development in general, it's just, it just appears loose. This has not been developed. You're selling parcels out of a nine-acre tract, okay? None of the development's done. Detention's not done, okay? There's detention, screening type, and construction's not done, access drive construction and/or type's not done. Firewater lines to Lot 3, which is deep, that goes 1,000 feet deep, that's not been evaluated. There's not a cul-de-sac that achieves for your fire safety at the end of that access road. So just a lot to do, guys. But at the end of the day, I'm against it, and I think there needs to be a little bit of homework done on the, the development in general. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Newlin and Christine Scruggs, and then Janine Ackland? Did I say that one right? No? Okay, will you correct me when you get up there, okay? Mr. Newlin, state your name.
I'm Robert Newlin. I have nothing against McDonald's, but I do oppose this being built, where they're being proposed to build it. I'd like to add, I've got plenty of places to grab a burger if I wanted to, like we've mentioned earlier. But then a short distance of my house, there's a McDonald's on Broadway, there's a McDonald's in Friendswood, and they're building a new one on Pearland Parkway. We got three McDonald's and right here in the vicinity. Burger Tex, Jack in the Box, Good Vibes, they're all over the place. And the Whataburger, what I'd like to mention here is, you can save the funds for the traffic impact study. Because I'll tell you, as a resident that's lived here for 32 years, on Dixie Farm Road in Oak Brook subdivision, the traffic is terrible. And you're going to add a restaurant with two lanes for drive-throughs? Trying to get onto Dixie Farm Road, right there where Home Depot, the only exit to turn west out of Home Depot would be right there. So you've got traffic coming out of McDonald's, traffic coming out of Home Depot. If I want to go back to my subdivision, I'm waiting on regular traffic, I'm waiting on traffic pulling out of McDonald's, I'm watching the traffic coming out of Walmart, which, by the way, the Whataburger, there's no 518 entrance or exit to 518 for the Whataburger. They go through the Walmart parking lot. Same thing with Panda Express. So there's two restaurants plus the Walmart traffic trying to get out of the Walmart parking lot, and we're going to add another restaurant in that area. If I have to go across the traffic on Dixie Farm Road, it's going to be horrible. Also, with the median right there, people will be going to make a U-turn on Dixie Farm Road because there's no direct opening right there for traffic to make a left-hand turn headed west to go to the McDonald's. So they're going to go up here, and I guarantee you, people, we've been making a U-turn or cutting through the neighborhood, like the gentleman said earlier. We have traffic cutting through Oak Brook and Oak Brook Estates from Pearland Parkway to get to Dixie Farm Road. I can't imagine what the people in Pine Hollow are going to be having with traffic that can't get out of Home Depot, will have to go all the way around through Pine Hollow just to get that back out to Dixie Farm Road. It's going to be horrible. The you've got people coming home from work, going to work. I've lived here for 30-something years. There used to be no traffic at 3:15 when I got off work. It's backed up now way past the subdivision. It's backed up way past Home Depot at 3:30 in the afternoon sometimes. The other day, I was leaving Home Depot, and I was the fourth car waiting to get out of Home Depot. Because of the median, there's only one exit to go west on Dixie Farm Road out of Home Depot. So if you can't get out of that exit, you have to go all the way around, cut through Pine Hollow, and then continue down Dixie Farm Road. Or, or try to get out on 518 to make a left-hand turn to get on Dixie Farm Road. You want to see the traffic? Look at the traffic at Canes. If somebody comes out of Canes and they want to make a left-hand turn, they've got three lanes of traffic to get across. It's ridiculous.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Scruggs?
Hi, Christine Scruggs, 3808 Pine Branch Drive, Pearland. Thank you for your service and for the opportunities to speak. I'm here to oppose conditional use permit 2025-0449 in the installation of a McDonald's restaurant at 3203 Dixie Farm. I live in the neighborhood behind this tract of land. My first concern is increased traffic on Dixie Farm, not only in the mornings when people are trying to get their kids and themselves to work, but also at lunchtime. Then think about the increased traffic congestion it will cause on an already overly busy intersection on Dixie Farm and 518 in the evenings at dinnertime. I've seen so many cars come out of the Walmart parking lot, try to turn left onto Dixie Farm, who pull into the middle and sit there with their back ends and their cars in the road, causing me to have to stop on Dixie Farm. This is unsafe, and this is not the type of scenario that we want. It can, it, I've seen several accidents there over the years. Traffic congestion and accident potential are highly likely to increase due to the high volume of traffic this type of business causes. Next, there's already a proliferation of fast food restaurants in the area. Chick-fil-A, Jack in the Box, Raising Canes, the upcoming Whataburger that's on an existing commercial space, as well as Panda Express, Subway to pizza places, and the nearby Taco Bell and Arby's. This is an overabundance of fast food where people sit in their cars, waiting for their often unhealthy food, all while the emissions from their running vehicles negatively impact our environment. We already have McDonald's on 518 in Friendswood and one on 35, which is enough. Third, people are likely to use my neighborhood, Pine Hollow, as a cut-through to enter the restaurant from the southeast. We can count on increased noise, especially for those whose properties back up to the area, increased lights, especially if it's a 24-hour restaurant, and increased odors and attraction of rodents from the cooking and the dumpsters. There's also the likelihood of an increase in unsavory people hanging around and a crime, and crime that accompanies this businesses, these type of businesses office, often similar to the shootings at Taco Bell and Jack in the Box recently. If this plot of land must be developed, let's make it a development for something healthier, like a park with walking trails, pickleball courts, or an indoor climbing gym, encouraging fitness and healthy living versus eating and fast food. In October, Mayor Cole was asked about drawing pickleball lines on existing tennis courts. People, young and old, love to play pickleball, but often can't find access to courts. Let's try to attract this type of business. We do not want commercial center for restaurants, retail, and multi-tenant commercial. This will not benefit adjacent and nearby residential developments, nor improve the character and integrity of the neighborhood, of the neighborhood. On the contrary, it adversely impacts traffic, noise, odors, visual nuisances, and drainage. The addition of fast food restaurants is not compatible with existing land use. This location is too close to current residential dwellings. I encourage you to say no on the conditional use permit. We do not need it. Thank you for all you do and for your consideration on this matter.
If I might add, if you're going to go to the podium and speak, we're giving you three minutes to speak, and all three have gone well over three minutes. Let's adhere to the three minutes, just so I don't have to cut you off. So let's try to do that, so we can keep these public hearings moving through. We've got three other public hearings that people have that are here for as well. So let's just make sure that we're keeping up with the time. Thank you.
And Mr. Nelson, if you want to make your way to the back also. No, no, you're fine. He's just going to come after you. Go ahead and state your name, and if you want to move the mic, you can. And you have three minutes. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm Janie Page McLan. I live in Pine Hollow, 1411 Pine Ash Court. I'm here to ask you to not let this McDonald's be built. It's very obvious. I'm a high school student. I look like it. Every day when I drive to school, my life is threatened by the sheer number of drivers in this area. As I drive down Broadway, there are cars darting in and out of the road, many of which are going to and from the Chick-fil-A or the McDou, or not the McDonald's, or the Jack in the Box on Broadway, not even 500 feet away from where this McDonald's is going to be built. Most especially, people dart out of the Walmart parking lot that would be right across from this new McDonald's. And every day when I drive back home from school, my life is threatened again by the number of drivers that are darting out of the many fast food restaurants in that intersection already. Now, could I take a different route to school? The short answer is no. The long answer is that there's only one other route out of my neighborhood towards my school. And that puts my life in danger as well by crossing a four-lane highway with no traffic lights. I have to go through this intersection at least twice a day. And I can confidently say that the majority of people in my neighborhood do as well, unless they choose the death trap of the unmonitored exit. In fact, many people feel this trap is safer than the intersection and decide to speed through our neighborhood to avoid it, which puts, sorry, which puts many of the children in danger of being outside in their own front yard. If you don't care about the threat to children, there are many mailboxes and cars that are on that route that have been crashed into by those same careless drivers. So why are we adding more chaos into an already busy intersection? There's a Chick-fil-A there already, a Jack in the Box, a Panda Express, a Raising Canes, a Subway, a Marco's Pizza, a Waffle House, a CC's Pizza, and soon to be a Whataburger, not to mention the Home Depot and the Walmart that are right next to this lot. Why are we building another McDonald's when we already have so many fast food options, and the nearest McDonald's is five minutes away? The nearest Pearland one, if you're concerned about that, is 11 minutes away. Why are we increasing the cha, the chances of fatalities in this area for a 10th fast food restaurant within 500 feet that already has another establishment? I want you to ask yourself if this McDonald's is worth risking the lives of the hundreds of children that, that just want to make it to school? Of the moms and dads that get up dutifully every morning to bring their children to get an education? Or the hundreds of moms and dads that drive to work so they can have food on the table for their children? Please, I want you to ask yourself if this McDonald's is worth risking my life, my friend's life, my mother and father's life? Is this truly worth risking the lives of your own family if they ever drive through this intersection? Please, don't let this McDonald's be built.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Nelson, state your name for the record, and you've got three minutes, sir.
My name is Greg Nelson. I live at 1617 Pine Crest Drive. Just three houses away from Dixie Farm Road to the west of this property. Traffic already on Dixie Farm in the morning and in the afternoon comes close to backing up to Pine Crest Drive. Putting a McDonald's there is only going to increase the amount of traffic. The NS zoning is intended to permit limited area of service establishments and retail stores for the benefit of adjacent and nearby residential development. And in which district, all trade is conducted indoors. Drive-through lanes are not indoors. And in such a manner as to be capable of placement adjacent to residential districts without changing the character of the latter. I believe you've heard everybody speak that this is going to change the character. When the daycare center was put on Pine Hollow, traffic increased on Pine Crest Drive, which is in Pine Hollow Estates, going into Pine Hollow to get to the daycare center. People cut, as been described, People cut, as Ben described, traffic flows like water, and people will go anywhere that they can to avoid traffic. Traffic's already bad enough on Dixie Farm in the morning and the afternoon. This is going to just get more people come through the residential subdivision of Pine Hollow Estates in Pine Hollow, if you approve this zoning. One last thing. As a private citizen, Mr. Cole represented this property in getting its zoning changed back in two thousand seventeen for the nine-acre tract. I just ask if he would state if he has an interest or any interest in this rezoning of the property. For full disclosure, thank you.
I'll make that quick. I have zero ownership, never had ownership, don't intend to have ownership, so full disclosure, there's your answer.
Thank you, sir. We had two additional, but they did not want to speak. They just wanted to.
Yeah, we'll open it up. So with that, we'll open up to the floor those wish to speak for or against this proposed request. I see one moving that direction. If there's anybody else that would like to speak for or against this proposed request, you can go to the back and we'll line up and queue them up.
How are you? See ya. I am Brad Crane. I address thirty-eight twelve Buckholz. And I had no intention of speaking on this matter, and out of respect for everyone, each time, I'll be real quick. I love McDonald's. I like them. In fact, I haven't had it since yesterday, but not at this location. And for all the reasons that Mr. Lopez stated earlier, I, I, I don't think this place should be built. I mean, truly, it's just a bad spot. And I'll just add a bonus comment for those that were speaking to safety. I'm just telling you, I travel Dixie Farm Road every day, and that's, that's a challenging intersection for all the traffic that comes out of Home Depot and Walmart and things of the like. My daughter getting rear-ended at that intersection, my wife having to come to screeching halt at times. And you're right, whoever spoke to the U-turns and stuff on Dixie Farm Road, I'm telling you, it's just a dangerous spot. So out of respect for the citizens and their safety, I'd ask that you say no. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Carolyn Riqualdi. I live at thirty-six oh two Pine Chase Drive. I am against the McDonald's being built there for all of the reasons that have been already stated. And the increased traffic through our area, I can state for sure as I see people running the stop signs. So I really don't want increase running a stop signs through the, through my drives.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Diane Leverton. I have just a couple of things regarding the process. I noticed earlier on the chart that, that there were nineteen people who submitted feedback against this request. Now, at the eleven three twenty-five P and Z meeting, there were thirty. So I'm just curious, is it the thirty from the P and Z who submitted feedback against plus the nineteen? Because if so, that's a total of forty-nine. So it's really a clarification, and I know you can't answer my questions, but I'd like to know. Also, too, at the last zoning request for Dixie Farm Road, which was back in October to change some residential land to NS Services, Mayor Cole recused himself because of his, I think, his property that he has on Dixie Farm or for some reason. And so I'm curious then, are you going to participate in this vote tonight? Because this is on Dixie Farm, too. So just a process question, since you recused yourself last month. I won't talk about the traffic since everybody else has, but I will talk about the traffic impact study. And I'm curious, what is the process to verify the accuracy of those numbers? And also, too, if we get Tech dot involved to make sure that that intersection is the best it can be if this goes in, even though I do not want this McDonald's to go in. This land is designated as Neighborhood Services, and so looking at the list of what qualifies, I think we need to stick with Neighborhood Services. We know it's going to be developed, but I think the cup options are just not good options for that location. So I hope that we take that into consideration. I did not see any kind of drainage plan for this site. Years ago, Pine Hollow had a lot of drainage issues, and those were remedied. I'm thinking about ten or twelve years ago. And I am concerned for the people of Pine Hollow as to whether or not this development would impact all those repairs that were done. Although I don't really care to eat fast food, I recognize that it's beneficial to the city, and I do think that if the city wants to pursue having McDonald's here, we should look to those vacant buildings that are on five eighteen between the Pearwood Skating Rink and Liberty Drive. Three buildings out of the eleven commercial sites are vacant. And fourteen fifteen Broadway is two point seven nine acres, and fifteen oh nine Broadway, which is the old bank that wanted to be the salads-to-go, is one point four nine acres. And so those locations would, could be modernized and updated by having a, a business that I agree with the applicant. McDonald's does draw more businesses, so I think that that would be a possibility and should be checked into if the city is determined to have a McDonald's. Also, too, with those locations, you would turn right because you would get traffic mostly probably from Friendswood, et cetera, Alvin. You turn right into the location, and then you turn right onto five eighteen, and then you turn right onto Dixie Farm Road. And you don't have all the left and right, left and right, like you have at Dixie Farm and five eighteen with the way the Home Depot is situated and the Walmart. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, last call for anyone offering testimony for this public hearing. Seeing no one moving in that direction, we will move to City Council for questions, comments, concerns. So since my integrity has been questioned, I'll talk a little bit about that. I did work for Mr. Giuliani back in twenty sixteen, I believe it was, or seventeen, whatever that was, to get it to Neighborhood Services as a private consultant. The only work I did for him was that. Not worked for him since. I don't have an ownership stake in this property, never have, never will, never planned to. When it comes to the public hearing last month, my residential lot was within four hundred feet of that particular lot on the backside of that subdivision, so I recused myself so I wouldn't be labeled as somebody trying to possibly kill that deal. Okay, I'm, my residential lot that I own on Dixie Farm Road or on Crown Oaks Drive or at Crown Oaks Court is about a half a mile from this particular site. You have to come out to it and then back up to it. It's twenty-six hundred feet, which is about a half a mile away. So didn't recuse myself from that one because it's not adjacent or nowhere near as close as the other one was that was here about a month ago. So, and I don't vote unless there's a tie, so. But I recused myself on that one because I was within four hundred feet, literally on the backside of my lot to, to the other lot was that close to that one. So that's why I did that. With that, we'll turn it over for questions, comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There was a question specifically asked about that.
Correct, about the number of comments. I was at planning and zoning as well, and I believe staff was intending to update us that at nineteen was actually since planning and zoning, we've gotten nineteen more comments, so the total is fifty-two.
Right, Ms. Cade?
I was, I live very close to that intersection, and I know how bad the traffic is, so I, I am even trying to leave Home Depot and turning if you want to go left. It's precarious. I feel like there is a much better locations to Ms. Leverton's point, better locations for this restaurant. I can't be for this because if, for no other reason for the traffic and the fact that there's so many residents here, but I can't be for this. Sorry.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Carbone?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Since half my neighborhood's here, thank y'all for coming out. That's what this process is set up for, the conditional use permit. Seen some regular faces, appreciate the input. I think it's overwhelming that it's not the right spot for this. So I'll be voting no, but thanks again for coming out, and we're here almost every other Monday, so you're always welcome. So, thank y'all.
Mr. Coza?
Thank you, Mayor. Martin or Vance, this is, I don't know, the second or third iteration of what might possibly go on this area. The very first one that I remember, I don't know if it was a year, a year and a half ago, came to us, and it was about having, one of the comments was a senior assisted living on the back part of the property with a strip shopping center on the front end. And to me, seeing this along with the, I don't know if it's Dollar Tree, Dollar, whatever store that's proposed to go in as well, is, I assume something's changed, something's, this seems like we're parsing it out here and there. Mr. Lopez made the comment that, that the detention's not in, that it's kind of being developed ad hoc, as far as that goes. Can you enlighten me as far as what the process is? Normally, we see a site plan. I know we did a year, a year and a half ago when it came before us, kind of what it was going to look like, and now we're getting it in bits and pieces.
Right, so if you'll give me just a moment, I'm going to flip over to what the plat of the property looks like, just so that way we can talk from there. So you can see here, this is the plat that got approved that subdivided the overall lot. We're talking about lot number two here for the McDonald's tonight. However, it was brought forward to have assisted living here in the back previously. That is still kind of in the works, but it's still up to private development to figure out if that moves forward or not. What we have talked about and have had generate this meeting is the fact that the Neighborhood Services District does allow for some uses by conditional use permit. Earlier in the conversation, you heard discussions about the general store, the Dollar Store, Dollar Tree, I forget exactly which one it is that is proposed to locate here on Lot Four. And I've not heard a user for Lot One yet, but typically, whenever you see a large acreage of land such as this and that they are breaking it into multiple pieces, it's not uncommon for things to wait until you have enough development take place or enough desire for that property to then put in the investment for the driveway, for the detention area. Unless you have a very motivated owner or motivated buyer who is coming to the table to perform all of those actions.
Okay, so as far as the detention, are you, are you telling me that each thing that gets built, because like I said, this is a vast change from the strip shopping center that was proposed a while back, or you're telling me that it's going to be built as we go and added on to? What, I didn't quite understand that.
So the detention reserve is located here behind Lot Four. It's really kind of up to whenever the development comes in, whether it is built just for one lot or if they go forward and build the whole detention pond and allocate percentages for a certain amount of coverage for Lot Three, Two, and One, assuming that Lot Four comes in first, but you get what I'm saying with this. But either way, the detention area has already been sized for the totality of the development. It's just whether or not they build it in certain phases or if they build it all at once, but that's up to the market.
All right. Thank you very much. And to follow lead with my fellow members that have spoken already, I will be against this as well.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll echo my council members, but Mr. Lopez, thank you for the history lesson on that because I will tell you, I did not know that this was approved to be a assisted living or senior living, I think, and I think that's my biggest problem is developers sell us on one idea, and then down the line, they change it and flip the script. And so for me, I think that's the biggest reason. And I do appreciate it, as a member Carbone said, for you to come out, but, but remember, this is the first reading. So this will be back up, so it's important for you guys to show up again, or at least let the council members.
Real quick, the CUP has one reading. It's about resolution.
I apologize. So again, I do, I do appreciate you guys coming tonight because that does weigh a lot on council here today. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? So I also want to, we have this many people in the room. It's an opportunity to give some education on how these processes work. A thing like a McDonald's coming in on this site is not a business necessarily that the city went out to attract. We didn't go out to recruit them. The city's not bringing in McDonald's. This is a private developer that's coming in to buy space and build a restaurant. So they have a right to come in and make an application. They have a right to come in and make their case. It's up to you guys, speaking on behalf of your community, council, and P and Z, to wrestle with the idea whether or not they approve it or not. So I know that there was some comments throughout that alluding to the fact that the city is doing this. Why are we bringing this in? Why are we doing this? And I want to make sure that it's clear the city doesn't attract these types of establishments necessarily go out and recruit them, and our economic development efforts are focused on far different types of businesses than than a McDonald's. McDonald's, as mentioned, is certainly welcome in a lot of communities, is welcome in our community in the right spot. So this is probably not the right spot for them, but they have a right, whether it's them or a franchise owner, to come in and make their case. I'm also, I think we all believe that every tract of land deserves its day in court. This is the court, and we get the opportunity to rule and have those conversations. So just wanted to make sure that we threw that out there. You know, they, they pay the money to go through this process, and it's a risk that they are willing to take.
Mayor, somebody also mentioned that about planning and zoning, passing it so easily, but planning and zoning has different level of.
Well, they're not the final set.
It's like, I know, but they're voting on, voting the dirt more than what we're voting for, so it's not that they passed it so easily, it's just they, they're looking at a different criteria perhaps than we are.
All right. With that, we will close this doctative public hearing. Move to new business item number one. Mr. Carbone, would you present that, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution R twenty twenty-five dash CUP twenty twenty-five dash zero four four nine, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. We've had staff report as well as heard from the members of the public as well as council. With that, Mayor, Madam Secretary will call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
No.
Member Chavilla?
No.
Member Cade?
No.
Member Fernandez?
No.
Member Patel?
No.
Mayor Potem Byram?
No.
Member Coza? The motion fails zero to seven.
With that, we'll move to new business item number, excuse me, public hearing number two, same drill, Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we'll give it just a moment to allow the crowd to. All right, public hearing number two. This is a request by James Melody, applicant on behalf of Bell Bottom Foundation Company and Louis Perret Owners for approval of a zone change for twenty-nine point three five nine acres of land from the general commercial district to planned development district for a warehouse development. This is generally located south of ten twenty-one North Main Street here in Pearland. So a quick summary, applicant's intent is to develop the site for light industrial uses. They're proposing a base zoning of M one, which is the light industrial zoning district. The applicant had a workshop that is required in order to develop a new planned development with City Council and the Planning and Zoning Commission on May nineteenth of this year. From there, they discussed the district and gave some general feedback for the applicant. At that workshop, the proposal consisted of a three hundred and thirty-four thousand square foot building with two hundred and fifty-eight parking spaces and a hundred and one trailer parking spaces on that piece of property. General topics of discussion included the improvements of Nap Road, the fault line through the site, and buffering for the adjacent residential properties. With this, we've got public comments that went out. We had two against. And then, of course, we had legal ad, public notice within two hundred feet. we had legal ad, public notice within 200 feet, and the signs for the property all placed out. Here's a look at the aerial and zoning map of the property. You can see that there are a variety of residences to the west, contractors' office, office warehouse use, auto repair, convenience store with gasoline sales, and some undeveloped property all in surrounding of this property. Future land use area, future land use map calls for this area to be manufacturing. And then here is a look at the design plan showing two buildings. And then this is some facade renderings of the proposed development. Again, another side view. And a close-up of one of the buildings. As this is a plan development, they did go through and modify some of the permitted uses. You can see a variety of strike-throughs that are on both the permitted and the conditional use. And then they are proposing this one deviation out of that land use matrix to have some additional permitted uses for glass repair and auto tinting, auto repair major and minor, and auto sales, as well as commercial amusement indoor. So the next couple slides include some, some breakdowns of the deviations table. This was included in the staff report, so I won't go through each one individually, but I'll hit some of the highlights. The green text that's highlighted are areas where they are going above and beyond what is the typical standard for the M1 zoning district. And then the areas highlighted in red are where they're looking for small deviations or reductions in standards from the code. So with that, minimum area for gross site landscaping would normally be 15% due to the corridor overlay district, but that's reduced down to 12% excluding the area that's designated as the floodway. And then they are proposing one shade tree be provided every 30 feet along the North Main frontage. Normally, this would be a measurement of the total length of that, that frontage divided by 10 to get to a total number of inches. This is still maintaining a clean way of providing trees for North Main. Again, going back to articulation, this is a deviation that we've seen through a variety of warehouse-style projects, and it was also something that we are looking at updating when it comes to the overlay district and articulation to be able to, to meet, you know, buildings where they are currently being designed towards with one foot of articulation for every 50 feet of frontage. This transparency is being met through spandrel glass or a similar material. And then just to bring you back to the design plan, I want to highlight where the, the flood area is, or the floodway, since that was a part of one of the conditions that was discussed. So with that, the proposed plan development meets three of the approval criteria, and all six of the applicable criteria for approving a petition for a new plan development. The major deviations that are proposed are to increase the standards rather than to reduce them, which is going to result in a higher level of design than would otherwise be able to be brought forward through the straight zoning. And then this PD also restricts uses which would possibly be incompatible in the proposed base zoning district. With that, staff recommends approval of this zone change from GC to PD with two additional conditions. These were things that we had thought of after we had already worked back and forth with the applicant. First condition was that any swell along Main Street be no steeper than six to one in slope. And then number two, that the slope of any landscape buffer swell adjacent to the residential zone property shall be no steeper than 10 to one, or a retaining wall with a minimum height of six feet be provided to reduce impacts of elevation change. With that, staff presented all of this to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and these conditions were actually honed a little bit with, with the P and Z's help in order to make sure that we're getting the right intent with steeper and greater than in, in the language there. But they ended up voting a six to zero vote in favor for this new PD. With that, Mayor, I'll pass back to you.
All right. Thank you for that. See, the applicants here are present. Do you have a presentation as well? Just give us your names for the record and go into your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We're grateful for the opportunity to be in front of you guys tonight, and thank you to the broader city staff for working with us to put together this, this PD and present it to you and the rest of everybody here tonight. My name's James Melody. I'm with the Hanover Company, who's the developer for this proposed project. We are at Hanover, an over 40-year-old development company that's local to the greater Houston area. I wanted to just reintroduce myself and the company to everybody, and, and let y'all know that we're proud of the fact that we, on many projects over many years, have worked with cities to do these types of PDs, and we're grateful for the input throughout the process, so that we have the opportunity to make targeted elements of our project more robust. Those things include drainage, infrastructure, and even through, as you guys have seen, the discovery of certain things like geologic fault lines to adapt our project so that it, it makes sense for ourselves and the broader staff. Just sharing a couple images of, of product that we've delivered. We take great pride in, in delivering buildings that are aesthetically pleasing, and we know that 35 is an important corridor for the city, and deserves the attention that it's getting through this process. And I'll yield this presentation to Laney and Ethan with Kim Lee Horn behind us. So thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ethan Harwell. I'm a planner with Kim Lee Horn. We're happy to be working with Hanover and your staff to actually craft the standards of this PD. So as James mentioned, when we were here several months ago for our workshop meeting, we talked about a few things related to this property. Really, we talked about its key location along the SH 35 corridor, and that being critical to the redevelopment of the corridor and economic development here in Pearland. We also talked about how important it is for the city to maintain an aesthetically pleasing appearance there along Main Street, you know, with all the improvements that EDC did a few years ago especially, and the investment we already have there. We talked about the need to improve traffic, especially along Nap Road, and the need to really make sure that this project has as little impact on our residential neighbors as possible. So what I'd like to do next is we'll just talk through a few key elements of our site plan, as well as the, the PD. So if we kind of work around this, this image clockwise, I'd like to start out with the call out in the top right, floodway, no development. That portion of our site, as we know, is located within the floodway of the nearby creek, and we have a group, straight up, just not agreed to develop anything in that part of the site. Martin talked about our percentages for open space on the site excluding that area. So we meet 12% open space across the site excluding that floodway. If you include the floodway, those sort of 15, 16% of our site is actually green. That was just our way of designated, designating in the PD that we would not develop in that space. Moving down around the side, adjacent to the residential neighborhood, we do have an enhanced setback today under the current zoning, or if we were coming in under straight light industrial zoning, we would only be required to have a 25. With our PD, we propose to increase that up to 120. In that 120 feet, we also agree to some extra screening, restrictions on lighting, and that sort of thing. No limited dock, and no dock doors facing that, that direction either. Really, to help create that, that visual and spatial buffer there between the activity on our site and, and our residential neighbors. Also, along that eastern boundary, you'll see our landscape buffer. That's a buffer that's made up of a shrub, an ornamental tree, and a shade tree. What that does is create three different levels of screening, shrubs to help block noise from tires and headlights, ornamental shrubs to help block the view from a person standing, and then shade trees, which grow up above the fence line, there is an existing privacy fence there, and help block view of the upper parts. That buffer extends from the floodway down to Nap Road, where we do propose a driveway. We've proposed some additional screening to the, the commercial lots, the front Nap Road. That's not normally required by code, but you can see we have a drive aisle there. Those lots are more likely to be retail-oriented or other business-oriented type uses, so we want to provide some extra screening there to be good neighbor. And then along North Main, I'll preview some of our architectural renderings that you've already seen some from Martin, and our, our landscaping there. Some of our standards related to landscape have been modified, really to just complement and enhance what the EDC installed several years ago. We don't want to create a situation where we just have a cluster of plantings up there along the roadway. So you can see in the photo on the bottom right, the crate myrtles are planted along the drainage swale at a regular interval. What we proposed there is a series of shade trees like live oaks planted at a similar interval to help create kind of a more formal environment as you come into the city and complement, complement the existing plantings. You'll also have parking lot screening there along Main Street. The image in the top left is actually facing the residential property line. That is all the existing vegetation there. We have written in standards to the PD to incentivize us to leave that existing vegetation. Best practice when a, a plant is full grown and mature like that is, of course, to leave it. It enjoys where it is, and that can provide far better screening than it could when we install new plantings that would be smaller and take years to mature. So the way the PD is written, we leave all that existing vegetation there along the fence line, simply plant in between where we need to help fill and get. We didn't want to take a minute to touch on drainage, and our plan to address that on the site. We understand this area of Pearland is prone to flooding, has experienced catastrophic flooding events in the past. We'd like to just take a moment to explain how we address flooding and stormwater detention on our site. Today, in its existing, existing undeveloped condition, the site is relatively flat. When water lands, when rainwater lands on this site, it simply pancakes and spreads out everywhere, and then rushes down to the creek uncontrolled. With the development of the site, we'll be adding a level of control that does, to the water that does not exist there today. Instead of all rushing off in one large rain event, all of the rain is first collected onsite in onsite storm source systems. It's, site is graded so that it's directed to curbs and inlets and culverts that pipe water underground to a detention. A detention pond holds the water that's collected during a rain event, and then slowly releases it in a controlled manner so that the rate of water leaving the property is the same as in the undeveloped condition. So today, the water runs off at a certain rate. When you pave it, it runs off faster. That pond is the buffer there to catch that water and slowly release it, so that it is not a big rush off into the storm source systems. From the pond, the water is actually going to be redirected over to SH 35, where it will then flow to the creek. So we will install a large underground pipe that takes that water from the pond to SH 35. So no flood waters, no rain water will actually be directed onto our adjacent single-family homes or commercial neighbors anymore. It will all be directed to the pond and then out to existing drainage facilities in the highway to the creek. Architectural standards we've proposed in the PD are slight modification to what the COD District requires along North Main Street, really to just accommodate a building of, of this scale. Our buildings do present nice corner entries. We've written in standards to ensure those are, are well decorated and ornamented. And then articulation, every 50 feet along that facade, you don't have a large facade looming over you. It's broken up, it's differentiated by different textures, colors, and patterns of materials there as well. The image in the bottom right-hand corner of the slide is actually the eastern facade that would be closest to the residential neighbors. We wanted to provide that to illustrate how we, we treat that facade. The only entries and exits you'll see on that facade are emergency exit doors. The only lighting that would be on that facade would be a security emergency exit lighting as well. No windows, no activity happening on that side of the building. And then the trees in that image can illustrate how the larger shade trees along the buffer and in the parking lot grow up to help block the upper view of the building. We have, we certainly understand the condition of Nap Road is substandard at its moment, today. So something we've been working on is conversations with the EDC about improving Nap Road. Today, you have an 80-foot right-of-way, but you only have 22 feet of pavement. You have two 11-foot travel lanes. Within that 80-foot of right-of-way, we can actually improve that to be two 12-foot travel lanes with a 12-foot left-hand turn lane. That would be a curb and gutter section with underground storm source, so you wouldn't have the ditches that are on the other side. Those improvements we're looking at would run from SH 35 to Glenda, and would also include some extra illumination and safety lighting there at Glenda, I'm sorry, there at Nap and SH 35. Those conversations are still ongoing, but we wanted to make you aware that was something we're, we're very cognizant of. If we enter into that partnership with the EDC, it would help really advance a much-needed public improvement between that public-private partnership there with the EDC. We are very excited to be here in Pearland, be contributing to the economic development strategy of the city, and really taking an undeveloped piece of property and making it something worthwhile. So I'm available for questions, James is as well. We do have our Civil and Land Safety Architect here as well.
I'm, I'm not sure what was said, but we'll get to question and answers and follow carry here in just a second. Is that, does that complete applicant's presentation?
Yes, sir, we're done.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, we will move to the portion where it's open to the public for speaking for and against. We do have several people who signed up to speak on this one, so we're going to call your names in the order we received them. You go to the podium, give us your name for the record. You do have three minutes to speak. It is also important, if somebody's already said what you've reiterated, you can get up and say ditto and keep your time a little bit shorter if you would like. Mayor Potem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Angie Infante?
Infante.
Make your name for the record.
Hi, Angie Infante. Good afternoon. I'm a resident in, on Glenda Street. So I came here just to speak about the proposed Hanover Pearland development. It's 35 acres, and 35 acres of concrete. My home is, will be located right by the detention pond. So my concern is, out of the whole property, why not push that detention pond by Highway 35, which it's going anyways, all the stormwater would be going to. Our, we're feet away from the creek. Clear Creek is one of the major watersheds of the Houston area, so we don't just get Pearland water, we get Houston area water. And so while building this, you really have to take into account, it's all residents. That's not a warehouse district. It, there has a couple of warehouses there. They haven't really done much in the years that's been there, over 20 years. So it does look nice, but my concern is the placement of the detention ponds, and making sure we're so close to Clear Creek, why not push it straight there instead of having that gush come to all the residents that have been there for 40 years plus? So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Elias Barasa and Alejandro Barasa. Make your name for the record, sir, and you have three minutes. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. My name is Elias Barasa. I live at 1170 Glenda Street. It's in the corner of Glenda and Nap. I'm very next to the proposal of Hanover, and I've been living there for about 20, more than 20 years, and I bought that property when I sent my house almost 50 years ago. And believe me, very seldom improvements has been doing And believe me, very seldom improvements has been doing to that community. And we are a very nice community. We've been paying taxes for the longest and we need a little bit of more improvement on that neighborhood. Instead of bringing businesses that would not help our community. I don't know, you've been through Harvey. At that time, it was very, very bad. And if it's gonna make it worse with these businesses coming in, you're gonna have to stream out of there. I'm very, I can be very for developing in, apparently in Texas. But in these proposals, proposal, I will be against it. Believe me, at the last proposal, I've, I heard a person saying that if there is places in Pearland, Texas, instead of bringing these businesses coming in, that, that area is not an industrial area. And believe me, it looks very beautiful what they presented, but it's very close to our neighborhood. And a city park will be just nice in that, in that place. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Alejandro, if you state your name and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Alejandro Barasa. That's my father. Just to reiterate the flood concern, humans, we have this idea that if we start controlling something, that we're going to be able to make it a better place. But God obviously is in control of everything. When we start controlling things, we actually mess things up. Even if you have the best planners, right, they can't foresee every eventuality. Right now, the flooding is a major concern. Increased traffic is a major concern. They said that they were going to remove the ditches in order to make the lanes wider, which they would have to do anyway according to the Texas code for the roads because it's going to increase the traffic in that area. Many people all over from the backside of Old Alvin, they take that road in order to go into Houston. So it's going to increase the traffic there, both going out and coming in. The detention pond, one thing that, I mean, how are they going to keep the pests from staying away from that detention pond? If you've ever been around detention ponds, like if those up, then the mosquitoes come. This is a city type thing, right? Like we see Pearland as a suburb and we want to keep it that way, right? Businesses want to come. I mean, they have their day in court, like the mayor said, right? But if they come, they're going to buy it off piece by piece and we're going to lose the soul of Pearland. Keep city stuff, city stuff, and keep Pearland, Pearland. It's a very difficult thing for it to be right in our backyard, especially off, just coming from Harvey. As even Councilman Patel said, he said that sometimes they present these things and then they do the switcheroo, they switch it up later. We don't know what's going to be there. And if they're going to build high up warehouses, districts, like the warehouses, their wares are going to be fine. But when it floods, what's going to happen to our houses? And we tried to gather as many people as possible. Maybe only two appear against there, but it's definitely a lot of people here, we're against it. I would much rather prefer something beautiful or just the way it is. I mean, people, it's a cow pasture. The people that came earlier, right, they were from HEB. They, they bought a cow pasture too, if y'all remember way back when, it was over there. We waited for the perfect time and something perfect came that actually did help the community and bought a lot of jobs, a lot of businesses on a major road. This isn't the right thing. It's right behind houses. Who's gonna, if you guys said no to houses before, you're going to say yes to factories and manufacturing? Light industry becomes heavy industry, just as commercial is trying to become industrial, then light industry is going to become heavy industry. And if we say no, they're always going to find another place to buy, another place to sell. They have that opportunity to do that, but we as community members, we as housing owners, right? We don't have the opportunity to move. We as citizens can demand our right in order for you guys to vote for us, but we trust that you guys will vote with us in this case to be against that property.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Crane, if you'll make your way to the podium and Ms. Bryant, you'll be right after him.
Mayor, council members, hey, thank you guys very much for all that you do. I'm grateful. I'll try to be brief. I've got a few, several points I want to, I want to bring up. So I want to acknowledge that the future zoning for this property is M1. But I think as a bit of a twist, and what was submitted to planning and zoning now to you council, is they're comparing this development to M1. It's not M1, it's GC. And so, so I've just some general concerns. And I think that the biggest issue from, from, from light industrial, let's call it zoned M1 versus general, general commercial. The biggest issue for me is in general commercial, I believe, and please take this as a grain of salt because I don't know this for sure. But 25% I think is the number where it's supposed to be office and the rest, the rest of the space is supposed to be, you know, warehouse, I think, which is what's limited, I think, in general commercials. Take, take, and so, so it appears to me that the, that the primary reason for them trying to change to M1 is that, is that, is just that. They're trying to create a much bigger footprint. So I'm just concerned that their metric in, in what they've submitted to planning and zoning now to council is, is compared to M1 when it's not M1 at all. It's actually, it's actually GC. And so, look, I acknowledge that, that M1 was the future zoning piece, but let's be candid. My office will not be manufacturing. Diamond Bolts will not be manufacturing. The church on the corner of Nap Road and 35 will not be manufacturing. And so there's several, there's a restaurant over there as well. So if you look at that, that's planning and zoning layout, you'll see that, that that's all concept crafted at some point in time and it's just concept. It's not what tomorrow is going to bring necessarily. So I just think it's odd that they compare that, that zoning to M1 versus general, general commercial. The property next to me is where they want, I'll try to be quick, Ed Burnett, is where they, they're trying to have this road come, come right by Alex's house. And, and, and while they're saying they have 120 foot setback, that's a building setback. The reason they need access to Nap Road is to get to the intersection for safe traffic, traffic in and out with 18-wheelers. I would not want to live on Glendale Street, Glenda Street and have truck traffic potentially 24 hours a day, parked right outside your backyard, waiting for a place to park where there's 101 trailer spaces. So I'm just some general concerns about that. Drainage, that's, again, just trying to be quick. Traffic is just a huge issue for me. Even, even, even in light that you guys are planning on, or there's considerations for taking Nap Road and making it better, this is just, it's just, it's just a huge issue. There's a reason we need access to Nap Road. Then we're going to set a precedent. We already know that there's another facility that's coming, that's considering another access to Nap Road, which is just, 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 just south of Nap Road. And so now we're going to set a precedent. Nap Road is going to be an abortion of a street. I'm just asking you guys to reconsider this, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Bryant? You'll state your name and you have three minutes.
Yes, sir. My name is Amy Bright. I'm the current owner of Diamond Bolt, currently Brad's neighbor. So I'm going to ditto everything he said to not waste any time. My concern was not just the, the traffic of the road, but it was the drainage as well. It was also what they promised it to be when they offered us money to buy a side of our driveway, which is not what they have presented to y'all at all. Also, the traffic light at 35, if there's more than two vehicles there, you're going to sit there for 20 minutes and I'm not joking. And on the drainage for Clear Creek, well, I live in Friendswood. We all know for the last 20 years, Clear Creek has been a huge drainage problem for multiple cities, multiple counties. I don't foresee it being any better. Along with the new neighbor across the street from Nap Road, he offered apparently to, he told me just here recently, he tried to do the road and he was declined it. He was going to pay for the road. Instead, he said, he was told y'all were the city of Pearland. I don't see how that benefits anybody, especially taxpayers that live in that, that community right there. Or businesses. So I don't know a lot. I'm new, I'm a woman business owner and I'm learning as I go, but I am scared. I was here for, for the flood and I do see the streets. And if any of y'all were brave enough to drive through that light to steamboat bills, I'm sure you'd be terrified of what your car looked like underneath it when you were done. That's exactly what that street will look like where all those childrens walk and the buses go every day. So those are my concerns and I'm thankful y'all took the time to hear me speak and hopefully take my consideration as important and that's it. Thank you.
Is that it? That's all our public?
Sounds good. We'll open it up to those in the audience who'd like to offer testimony to this and go to the podium, give your name for the record. Have a few minutes to speak. See one going. Anybody else want to go, you can queue up with her. It'll just save time as people walk.
Good evening. My name is Bridget Del Valle. I live at 1160 Glenda Street. So my home is currently, has the back right up against the property that they're proposing to do this new development. I am here tonight to express my strong opposition to this proposal. I think we need to keep this neighborhood a residential neighborhood. I have seen in the past couple of years, some current upgrades. We got new sidewalks, we got new crossing signs. I've actually seen in the last like five years or so, more kids out on the roads, walking, riding their bikes than I had in the past. I've been there 15 years now. Last five years, I've seen such a huge family increase, you know, just more, more children outside actually playing and riding their bikes. I do have several concerns that I hope you'll consider. First of all, the industrial noise, the traffic, like they've said, that's a huge concern for me. I live, I will be listening to all of it every single day, every single night if this goes through. I currently have to deal with listening to the traffic on telephone. It is not as far away as it seems. I'm able to see the traffic from my backyard. So having an industry with all these trucks, these warehouses right up against my backyard is not going to be beneficial to me at all. I enjoy that we currently have a peaceful neighborhood. There's not really, you know, everyone is very friendly in that neighborhood. Everyone gets along. There's not a lot of rioting or anything like that, you know? For the most part, it is a nice, safe and quiet neighborhood. Secondly, the truck and commercial vehicles are going to pose a huge danger to the children that are now in this community. 18-wheelers just driving by Nap Street or driving through Glenda is going to pose a huge risk on these children. And also, there's a lot of us that walk our dogs as well. This is also going to pose a threat to them. We have also, my other concerns are the impacts, the noise, the lighting. I don't want 18-wheeler lights shining through my windows when I'm trying to sleep in the middle of the night. I don't want them shining through my window in the morning either. If I have to work late and sleep in late, that is not one thing that I want to be dealing with, is disrupted sleep. And then finally, the, they presented a very pretty building that's going to be phasing Main Street. It's going to be phasing 35, but all they're doing is pushing all the ugly to the back and that's where our homes are. I really hope you consider denying this request. Thank you for listening.
I'm Jeannie Massey and I live on Glenda Street and I'm just asking you to vote no. I've been there since 1980 and I flooded in Harvey. I lost everything. I don't want to flood again and I don't want the noise. So please, I'm begging, please vote no. Thank you.
All right, last attempt, anyone like to offer testimony? Seeing no one moving in that direction, we'll move to.
I also have a question. Hi, my name is Stefan Speckel. I live on 1112 Glenda. So this warehouse would be, what, what do we say, 200 feet away from us? I have a little bit of background in, in stormwater. So my question is how big would that pipe be that they're saying they're going to use to divert from the pond to the street? Because it doesn't sound right to me.
We'll, we'll answer your, we'll ask your question under council portion of it. Thank you. Okay. All right, with that, we'll move to questions, comments, concerns from city council. We'll open it up. Mayor Pro Tim?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Vance Martin helped me out a little bit. I seem to recall we had a requirement, we have commercial property that butts up to residential and there's got to be a masonry fence. Is that our typical standard?
Thank you.
That's one of the things they're asking for a variance on?
No, so I just want to quickly talk about the buffer and what is allowed and what could be done. So normally, under a, when you have a non-residential use adjacent to a residential use, the Unified Development Code allows for two different ways of handling that, that buffer area. You can either have a 25-foot wide landscape strip with a six-foot masonry wall, or you can have a 30-foot landscape strip with no additional wall. This proposal indicates that there's not going to be a masonry wall, but there would be 120 feet of, of separation from the building. And then there is some additional landscaping that's being proposed for the buffer in a 30-foot area.
So they're meeting the UDC in that requirement because they're doing a 30-foot landscape buffer plus the drive?
Correct.
Couple of questions for, for you guys. Thank, I'm glad y'all are already there. So great, thank you. Is this site planned to be operating 24/7, 365?
So right now, users for each individual, individual suite within these buildings are still unknown. So you could potentially have a 24/7 user in the site, but what I can tell you is that these buildings are not ideal for the types of users who would want to operate 24/7. When you have a warehousing distribution type user, they want a half a million square foot, million square foot cross-stalk building like you'd see when you drive down the roadway. These buildings are much smaller, 150,000 square feet, I think is our largest one. 215,000, 215,000 square feet, I apologize. Which is likely to be broken up into smaller suites for individual tenants. It's only rear load, so really you're shipping and receiving most likely during normal business hours during the day. So 24/7 is entirely possible, but most likely not. When 24/7 is?
Just to expand, what Ethan was getting at is often high throughput facilities have docking and loading on two sides of the building because they move so quickly. A single load building like this one, which you can see the loading is on the northern side and, and the eastern side of that building generally don't attract the Amazons of the world, the third-party logistics companies that are so well-known for their heavy, heavy traffic, traffic count. Those are the sites that are kind of like beehives in that way and, and ours won't have that type of throughput. And then from a 24-hour perspective, it's, it's the market and what is key to the tenants is, is being able to access the property so that if there's a special need for a client, they can meet that need. Otherwise, you lose contracts to other companies in other buildings and it's simply not a competitive space for people to occupy in a, in a world with alternatives.
I appreciate that. And with, with the possibility, I appreciate all of the 120-foot buffer. I appreciate the multiple layers of landscaping to help with the visual impact on the neighbors. I'm not sure, somebody would have to tell me because I'm not an expert, but I'm not sure. sure how much that landscaping is really going to help with noise from heavy trucks, especially they're going to be backing into theirs. You got your backup sirens and all that other kind of stuff. So I'd like to see some consideration on how do you control some of that noise issue for the residents on that. As far as the staging of trucks coming through there, then, I mean, are we talking about typically, we're looking at 18-wheelers or are we looking smaller box trucks?
It could be anything. And one of the reasons these buildings are the shape that they are is, is from a utilitarian perspective. So we want them to be as useful to as many companies as possible. So you can have, the universe of tenants could include a potential in, in some of our product in the greater Austin area. We've gotten groups like Skyzone and Slick City, which have indoor trampoline type uses because of the clear heights. We've gotten everything from that to local businesses that need a place to store their product. So that's to say, we, we can accommodate any truck and we'll likely see a mix of all.
Okay. We have, we had a previous project where we, in a different part of town, where they were receiving trucks. And, and I think maybe it was Mr. Crane mentioned staging trucks if they're having to wait to get in, you know, what does that look like? I'd hate to create an environment where we've got 18-wheelers stacked up down Knapp Road.
Sure. And one of the, one of the reasons we have our access point on the eastern side like we do is because any closer to Highway 35, and you do end up with a scenario where you're taking a left turn onto Knapp Road and then an immediate left-hand turn into the property, where that could be a little bit more trouble. What we're, what our goal is, is to have a long flow of traffic through the space. And so there's going to be a counterclockwise way that this all works, where you're going to have trucks taking left-hand turns, moving down Knapp Road, moving up to the property and moving through and potentially exiting on the, the different driveways that we have on 35. But the, the, the goal is to create a long sweeping path through traffic, not a short, abbreviated one that creates pinch points.
Okay. Yeah. I would want to make sure we don't build up a bunch of traffic there on Knapp Road. And then two more quick points. I like what you're talking about, about putting trees along 35 to create that entrance. I'm not sure live oaks are the best choice. I know they grow quickly, but I'd be concerned about the width of their root system starting to get into the roadway. So maybe consider something different. Go, go ahead.
Absolutely. Our landscape architect is here and I see her nodding her head agreeing with you. I simply used live oak as a sample.
Yeah. Fair enough. And then my, my last question, again, Mr. Crane mentioned, we're comparing this to M1, although it's zoned for GC. Martin, do we, do we have something we can put up that would demonstrate what they can do by right in GC versus what they're asking for?
Well, they're asking for a PD. So we can, we can put whatever we want. We can restrict.
And member Byron, Mayor Cole, if I could just real quick, so on that, and Martin will pull it up. So in GC with a CUP, the office warehouse would be allowed by there. And so if you want to think about it, is we have two paths to get to where this applicant's kind of asking. They could come in with a CUP to request this use and they'd come in with a site plan, or they can come in with a PD and, and do equivalently the same thing. And so really, we've got two options to make it happen. They've come in with a PD where that has an M1 base and they've kind of gutted a lot of the heavier uses out of it versus doing, so we got like a M1 minus or a GC plus kind of option, both of which give us some control and protection for the neighborhood that is to the east. And in the 120-foot buffer, the increased landscaping, any conditions y'all come up with tonight are kind of what we're toggling as far as getting them the land use entitlements that we're talking about. But go ahead.
I'd like to make, point out one other thing about our site plan, if I may. We're talking about the loading and unloading aspects of the site. I'm not sure if we can put the site plan back up. Yes, there we go. The loading and unloading activities aren't happening along the edge of the property with residential. They're really happening in that space right above the larger building, right? The faces north. So all those activities are on the north side of the building. Noise will echo to the north. And so really, what you see from SH 35 or from the neighborhood really is just a small window there, right above the loading docks. You can see the existing trees on the left side of the building and then the open space where the buffer is there. Really that unloading, unloading and loading activity is happening in the center of the site, not long.
Ms. Chavera?
Thank you, Mayor. So there's a lot of concern about flooding. So can you talk a little bit about that, please, and how you're going to address that matter?
Yes, thank you. Like Ethan alluded to in his presentation, the way that water falls onto the site improved with these two buildings, we have paving and grading that will direct all of the water that doesn't fall onto the building's roof into inlets and underground stormwater systems. If the water falls onto the roof of any of these buildings, they're pitched in such a way that they fall toward the center of the site. The water is gathered in downspouts, goes down into that same underground storm sewer system, is funneled toward the detention pond, which is a dry detention pond. And then that, we have a pipe that brings that water to Highway 35. So everything, you know, our, our Kimley Horn engineering team, that's what they do. And some, one of the things that I talk about when you, when you understand that you never drive through a smooth retail parking lot ever again, because you start to understand the pitches that come into that space and making sure that that water is controlled. That's the same effect that we're having here, is making sure that, that water goes where we want it to go and doesn't errantly get pushed onto adjacent property.
Ms. Kay?
Wasn't there a slide with arrows? I can't find it. Can you go back to it? That's it. Does, I agree, what Ms., what Councilmember Chavaria said, I agree with the, the flooding issue is a, is a concern. And just because of all the concrete, I think Ms. Infante mentioned that. And just the fact that, yeah, I mean, that's a lot of concrete going in right there. And, and thinking about all those 18-wheelers going down Knapp is, is very concerning as well. I, I'm not sure about this. Go ahead.
So while you have this slide up, the previous slide and this slide, we had a question about the size of the pipe, number three over here, underground pipe to State Highway 35, from the detention pond out to the roadside, which is obviously going to go to the Clear Creek. So can you answer and, and bring some clarity to that?
Yes, thank you. So the storm system has not been designed yet, but it will convey the 100-year storm and will be permitted through City of Pearland and Tex- dot.
So Mayor, it will meet all of our drainage criteria as all other development within the city does, which ensures that, you know, the, like they showed the existing drainage patterns, potentially draining to adjacent properties. They will have to make sure that all stays within their drainage system into their detention pond and then flows to 35 through the downfall pipe. So it'll meet all our current drainage standards that every other development meets that, you know, we've seen very good success with how that handles drainage.
And not only is that something we want to do, but there's a professional obligation that the Kimley Horn team has when they sign and seal their plans, that they abide by all of those standards and they have a duty not to push that water onto adjacent properties.
Fernandez?
Just for the purposes of the record, I, I think it's Laney, is that correct? Okay. We didn't get your name earlier, so if you could introduce yourself.
Yes, sorry. Laney Davis with Kimley Horn.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things that I, that kept, you know, coming to mind was drainage, which has been addressed. And I want to ask the question to you guys, why not put up a masonry wall for sound on the backside where the residents are? I know that y'all have discussed distance and it meets the UDCs and so forth, but if that is a big concern to the residents, why not put up that wall?
When we were working on the PD together with staff, what we had proposed was above and beyond, I think, what was the base? So this was what was considered at the time. And a masonry wall is, is another consideration that we can work through.
Okay. So y'all would consider that?
It, it, it's something that we would consider, given the adjacency of the building. One of the things that we worked on for the building's eastern side was keeping its, its parallel to the property line as short as it could be. So what you're seeing is only a portion of that property line has building on it. So I think it's, it's a 260-foot deep building. It's 60-foot is kind of a northwestern office pod. So it's a 320-foot deep, long exposure of building facade to the eastern property line. So we originally proposed a much larger, bulkier building that had a longer facade along that property line. Kind of a two-pronged fact of there being a geologic fault line that prevents you from doing a lot of different things with the site, just from a stability and safety standpoint. And then the fact that candidly, it became our, our belief that kind of a slightly smaller building footprint attracts a deeper pool of local and healthier tenants. As you may know, SB 17 creates a scenario where maybe there, there are Chinese 3PL, third-party logistics companies that could take these buildings. We don't want that type of tenant taking this space. And so we're building buildings that aren't attractive to those types of groups. And this, this generally attracts more regional, local business.
Yeah. As, as member Byram had mentioned, and I'm a little, I'm also concerned that the landscaping, is that going to be enough? You know, these trees, you know, it's going to take a while for them to mature. It's going to take a while before, you know, it really does its, its job. And so, I don't know. I'd like to see, and I don't know how other members of, of council feels, but, you know, I, I, I don't know. I think that there needs to be more because as you've heard, there was quite a bit of discussion about the noise and so forth. And I'm, I'm not sure on, on this landscaping.
Thank you.
If I may, we, we're discussing back here, we'd be happy to bring you standards for a wall to consider.
So, okay, thank you. Before today, when we originally looked at this, I don't think council really had a, that deep of a concern. I would say we were excited about the project. I haven't been here as long as some of us on this council that lived here. But a long time ago, if I remember correctly, Walmart had looked at this site when they were on 35 and they were trying to relocate. That is my understanding. And one of the reasons they couldn't do it was because of the flood, flood plain and whatnot. You know, I think the project needs to work with the residents around there. I, I can see if I lived behind that, I wouldn't want it. And it is concerning, right? With the noise, with the trucks coming in, kids playing on that street. And so, and I believe the lady from Diamondback, Diamond Bolt had said that that light barely stays for two cars and it turns red. And so all those concerns are valid. And so I would say, I think it may be time for you to kind of listen to the residents and get them to buy into this for me. Otherwise, I'm a no.
Mr. Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. So you got this pulled up and I think you've got that 120-foot setback. And I guess that, that's a great setback for the building, but it, you've, what would the, the setback from the, the, I guess, the truck lane to the, to the back, to the lot line?
30. I think that's the 30-foot.
Yeah. I mean, that, that's the...
It's roughly 25 to 30 feet.
Okay. I mean, that, I think that's the biggest issue. If I lived there, I'd almost rather have a, a wall the side of the building, not major truck traffic. And so I guess that, that's, that's one issue I think we need to get resolution on. And I guess the second, maybe more to staff, currently the zoning's GC. And so there is a lot of development that can come in there by right and a lot of uses that may or may not be better, worse. And so I, I would hope that, that we could work with you and come, come to an agreement or, or a development that makes sense for the, the neighbors as well. Because I have been around on council for a while and, and I appreciate you being here. Appreciate you putting the work in. We could just vote you down and then we've still got a, a large parcel that's GC by right. And that doesn't mean that, that any of the neighbors are going to have legally any say-so for what comes in there. And so we've got to balance that. I'm glad you're here. I'm glad to have all the public input. I hope we can get to, to a development that works for the neighbors as well as for y'all from a development standpoint.
My question is, since the, the feedback from the neighborhood and kind of y'all's willingness to work with them, and it's not here, but in the next part of it, but would y'all be open for a postponement to get some of this stuff worked out to where we could see what we could do to find some type of compromise?
Yes, sir. We'd be happy to postpone your first reading to be able to work with the neighbors and address concerns.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All right. Staff, do y'all have any wrap-up comments? Do you have any direction if we do postpone?
So on the postpone, and I would look to Lawrence and Legal for guidance on this if I get it too wrong, oh, which I do. I mean, I would, I would recommend a vote on the first reading and let us go to the second. And that way we can get it cleaned up and come back for one more vote versus having to come back for two.
I think the risk there is the votes no. Not to overstep, but...
And to that point, I mean, we can add a condition about the eight-foot masonry wall, if that would help.
Yeah. I, I, yeah, I think it, I think it's going to be cleaner if we postpone altogether and come back. We'll, we'll have a better, better understanding of it. But I did want to ask a quick question. I apologize because there was a alluding to, to Knapp, that somebody else said that they would build Knapp. That's news to me, that a guy on the south side of the road has agreed that he would, he would build Knapp. If that's the case, let's get him in, let's get him to write a check and he can, he can go build the road. I don't, I think that's news to us. Matt, would you explain that Knapp has been on our radar to rebuild now for several years? Just to be clear, it wasn't because these guys are here, it's been on our radar to rebuild for several years. So...
Yes, Mayor. I think the developer to the south would build it if we funded it, just like this developer's going to build it if we funded. They're going to manage the project. They're not, we're, the city's going to be paying through the sales tax money to build this. No one's proposing to build this road for us.
That, that, that's kind of what I figured. So, and again, this is an effort on Knapp Road brought to the, to the EDC from council, changing some of their rules where 20% of their proceeds each year are coming back in to build certain, certain projects that don't get into our CIP so we can upgrade some roads that are business-related. So we have to use their funds in a certain way. And so Knapp Road was one of those that has been, that has been earmarked to go and be rebuilt, which is a good thing in that particular area. So with that, I'm going to close this adopted public hearing. We will move to new business item number two. So Ms. Chavera, would you place that on the table and then we'll move forward with the postponement?
Consideration, thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, first reading ordinance number 2000M-277. So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Now we'll post, ask for a postponement for the record.
At this time, we'd like to go ahead and ask for a postponement for first reading of ordinance number 200M-277. So moved.
Second. We have a motion, a second to postpone this new business item number two. Madam Secretary, call for the vote on that.
Member Chavaria?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Fernandez?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Byram?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Thank you for that. With that, we're making headway. Here we go. All right. With that, we'll move to public hearing number three. As I understand, Patrick's going to, it, it, right now it's indefinitely. We don't have a date because we need to work through some issues. So it'll, it'll, I, I don't know that. I don't know, and we, we don't need to be having this dialogue. Martin or Vance, can y'all go outside and answer their questions real quick? Thank you. With that, I believe Patrick's going to give the...
With that, I believe Patrick's going to give the report on this one. So Patrick, would you, would you put the purpose in the record and then move forward?
Yes, Mayor. Give me just a second, it's taking a little bit to load.
Gotcha.
Thank you. There we go. Thank you, Mayor. So this is a request by Alan Mueller, applicant on behalf of FM 529 Ventures LLC owner, for approval of a zone change for 13.303 acres of land from the general business GB district to plan development PD district to accommodate a proposed mixed-use development consisting of multifamily and general business components. And the general location is the southeast corner of Broadway Street and Oak Road. So the applicant's intent for the development is to develop a maximum 315 multifamily units and two buildings on the southern 7.8 acres of the property and a commercial development on the northern 4.09 acres. And that will come, kind of the demarcation between north and south will become a little clearer as we go through the maps and the design plan. And so the proposed amenities for the multifamily includes internal, internal resident amenity center, courtyards, a dog park, and a walking trail around, a detention for the site. And the proposed base zoning is multifamily district for that southern 7.8 acres and general business for that 4.09 acres. And so this plan development went to a workshop on September 8th, 2025, and it was generally the same site plan, the same number of units. And there's minor changes with kind of open space and parking and certain specifics about the site. And so some of the general topics included compatibility of the site, traffic congestion, existing multifamily and emergency-related calls, configuration and design of the multifamily buildings, phasing for the overall development, design of the commercial property, as well as amenities, and the importance of landscaping and open space for the entire development. And so to date, Steph has received 20 written comments against the request and one written comment in support of the request. And that includes from before P&amp;Z until today at noon. And the ad was also posted in the Pearland News Reporter for this zone change. Public notices present to all properties within 200 feet. And then notification signs were placed on the property along Broadway and Oak Road. As I mentioned previously, the subject property is the general business zoning, and we have that same zoning to the north across Broadway and to the east. And then we have some neighborhood service to the west northwest, and then multifamily zoning to the south and to the west southwest. And the surrounding uses include the apartments to the south and west, the future Pearland Asian Town development on the north side, the other side of Broadway, and undeveloped land to the east and then to the north, northwest generally. It's looking at the future land use map, you kind of see this marcation between two different types of place types, and that's actually due to a pipeline easement, and this will kind of be our marker between commercial and multifamily going forward. But the subject property has two place types. It has commercial center for the northern part along Broadway. And then the southern half has compact residential as the place type. And it's kind of surrounded by commercial center along Broadway with some compact residential and urban living to the south and the east and west. And here's just some of the cut sheets for those specific place types. The commercial center's on your left, and then the compact residential is on the right. So we're going to look at the design plan, kind of breaking it up. The light pink, pinkish-red color is the general business base zoning district. And then the brown outlined area is the multifamily base zoning district. And this development includes two buildings with open space and surface parking with some additional covered parking along would be the eastern boundary, which is the bottom of your screen, and then in the middle of the site. So this is the landscape, kind of open space pedestrian and amenity plan for the development. And kind of going through the different amenities for the multifamily development, you can see the southern building or the second building. That would be where your clubhouse is actually going to be located, that'd be the grayed-out area. And then you have the pool amenity. And then the nor, northern building, which would be the first building you would see coming down Oak, includes a courtyard beer garden, which was discussed during the PD workshop as well. And then kind of connecting these two buildings is what they're calling the green promenade as a connection between these buildings. And on the southern side is their detention pond, which also includes a trail going around that detention pond. And there is a dog park that is proposed on the northern side of that detention pond. And also just to note, you'll kind of see these arrows running through the site, it kind of sort of circulation, but more specifically, social circulation moving through the multifamily, through the general business property to Broadway Street. And this was in an effort to kind of improve connectivity and actually give it a mixed-use feel where someone could move between the sites without having to actually drive in between them. And here's just a closer look at the two buildings. You kind of get a better look at that pool courtyard, as well as the Green Bridge promenade and the courtyard beer garden. And then kind of looking at the, the fencing plan now, I'll first focus on the, notice the outlined red dashed line. That is actually, that's the ornamental iron fence, which is to be more of like your perimeter fence around the entire development with access coming, the main access coming from the second driveway. I mean, you'll notice there's two yellow dash rays, that's where the gates are. And then this first one that you would come to on Oak is actually an exit-only vehicular gate. And then around the detention pond is a four-foot detention pond, typically that's for safety purposes. The dog park will be fenced as well, and the pool will be fenced per building standards. And it should also be noted that there are gates proposed throughout the site to kind of allow for access out to the sidewalk on Oak Road, but also allow for that access in between the multifamily and general business tract. So we get a look at the signage plan, and the reason I want to go over this, it has a little bit of different stuff, and it's due to the, where the property is located. And so kind of going first, in the top right-hand corner of the site, actually on the general business tract, you know, so there's a one, that's at the corner of Oak and Broadway. And this is where they're actually proposing the multifamily monument sign as an off-premise sign. This actually will be a part of the deviations, but they're requesting this due to the, due to the property being far back on Oak. And if you actually drive by the site, the two multifamilies also have their signs actually in the median. So they're requesting that as their only sign for the multifamily, but they're requesting it as an off-premise sign. And then given that they are proposing it as number one, as off-premise, they're actually, they are proposing a multi-tenant sign for the GB tract, but they're only proposing one, and that'd be down here. And there's specific spacing requirements for that, given that they are proposing another sign on that site. And then the last ones, three and four, are actually the on-premise, like attached signage to the building. And so first start with four, that's on kind of more of the amenity and clubhouse area. And that actually relates a little bit to this top image. It's kind of a representation of what it could look like. And then number three is on the northernmost building at the corner. And that actually is kind of like a blade sign. It's kind of a larger blade sign than what you would see maybe Pearland Town Center has blade signs, but the image, bottom image on the right-hand side kind of shows that, a representation of what that blade sign would look like. And then we see the renderings of the site. The top two images are, if you were looking from Oak Road at the development, the top most image is the, the first building, so the northernmost building, which doesn't have the amenity center. And then the middle elevation shows the amenity center. You can kind of see with that glass area on the bottom of the screen. And then the bottommost image would be what you could see from Broadway, if you were standing in Broadway, or the general business tract. And then here's a representation that the applicant actually provided for the general business tract. It's purely a representation or rendering, they don't have specific requirements, but it's representative of what the general business tract could look like. And then kind of just briefly going over the deviations, this first page is kind of more focused on the actual multifamily product they're proposing. So proposing more of an urban style. And so they're requesting deviations from the project coverage, which we've seen with other urban style, from the maximum 40% to 70%. Requesting a deviation from the residential density from 16 units per acre to 36.2. And then also the multifamily building height, they're requesting that deviation to go from 35 feet to 55 feet. And these next couple deviations kind of focus on the open space as well as parking. And so the first two are, cover the PD open space requirement and the multifamily common open space requirement. And they're requesting the deviation to reduce it, but to provide heightened amenities, so kind of that, including that pool amenity, clubhouse, dog park, the beer garden, as well as actually providing trails around that detention pond. And then looking at the multifamily parking, they are requesting a deviation from the parking as well. And they actually did a comparable to say, this is what we've provided in our other developments. This is why we're going with this. And this was something that was kind of discussed at the PD workshop a little about the importance of open space, but balancing that with parking and not just reducing parking drastically and kind of creating this issue where you may have not enough parking. And then lastly, these are just kind of the signage deviations kind of discussed these already, but they relate to that off-premise sign for the multifamily. They still will have to meet the size. It doesn't get to be a larger sign than what we would allow for any other multifamily, but they're requesting to have that one sign located off-premise. And then in terms of signage, while we were going through the process, they had kind of discussed doing two multi, multi-tenant signs along Broadway for the general business to kind of reduce down congestion of signs and having too many. Staff preferred for one sign. So they're requesting for the sign to be larger, dependent on if they have more tenants. So they kind of have the language of 150 feet plus 10 per tenant up to a maximum of 250 to ensure that if they do have a lot of tenants, that they're able to fit everyone on there. And then the last one has to do with that blade sign. Our code just really doesn't take into consideration a large blade sign. It only discusses, or two square feet is the maximum size. And it's kind of what you would see at the Pearland Town Center with the blade signs that kind of denote businesses. So they're kind of proposing something that the code doesn't even take into consideration. So in terms of the approval criteria, the proposed PD fully meets six of the seven approval criteria for PD, and specifically it has to do with the future land use, given that the, the southern portion is that compact residential. The compact residential includes primary land uses like single-family detached duplexes, townhomes, but does not include the multifamily. So that's where it's a no on that, but the commercial center northern part does, is consistent with that GB base zoning. So it's six out of the seven with a yes slash no for the future land use. And so while the multifamily base zoning is not consistent with the compact residential place type, MF zoning is compatible with the surrounding multifamily development. And additionally, the proposed PD includes amenities for the residents and walkable connections to future commercial uses to encourage that walkability and to create a true mixed-use area. So therefore, staff recommends approval of the zone change to a plan development. And the same request was presented at P&amp;Z on their November 3rd, 2025 meeting, and they voted six to zero to recommend approval of the proposed zone change as presented. I'll pass it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Patrick. I see Alan headed to the podium. So when you get there, Alan, give us your name for the record and go into your presentation.
It looks like we're up. Are we up? Again, Alan Mueller, we're going to tag team a little bit this evening. Nick Modametti is going to kick us off.
Hi there, Nick Modametti. Thank you for your time, and thank you, Patrick, for that introduction. We're excited to be here tonight, coming with the staff's recommendation and support, as well as P&amp;Z unanimously supporting the project. And hopefully, we can earn the same support from city council. So going here. So I want to walk through real quick some history on this track. So the property has been marketed, and the neighboring tracks have been marketed for about 15 years for general business uses. And there has been zero serious inquiries for general business on the entire track. Furthermore, the property had, until our ownership lacked access into Oak Road, which folks may know is a private roadway. And now we negotiated with the ownership of Oak to get a access easement, allowing us to provide primary access to the property off of Oak rather than off of Broadway, which should help with traffic congestion. In terms of constraints, as you can see, and as Patrick put out in the PowerPoint, there's a pipeline corridor that runs through the track, splitting it into two, which makes development challenging. And furthermore, it's rather narrow and deep, which, as folks will note, is not particularly conducive to retail uses 1,300 feet away from the thoroughfare. So when you zoom out a little bit and you look at the round surrounding area, you'll, you'll see that independent of what happens here tonight, the area is a multifamily and townhome area. When you look between Cullen and 1128, there is a multifamily next to us, there's a multifamily behind us, there are rental townhomes on Fight, there are new rental townhomes on Fight and Cullen, and there is a senior multifamily over behind the storage. So truly, as Patrick said, the character of the area is already a rental character, and what you're going to see tonight is not a change from that. I want to walk through real quick as well, just some analysis we did as developers as to what could be done with this track. So as I already said, retail, the track is 13 acres, narrow and deep. It works well on Broadway, which is why we're proposing a mixed-use project, as you'll see, but it is not going to be feasible to have 13 acres of retail. Office is a struggling market. I think everyone in the development world knows that. Office condos in Pearland, many of them are sitting vacant. For single-family housing, we actually approached several single-family housing developers, including Chesmoor Homes, prior to this project coming forward. And we were told, look, there's multifamily on all sides of this property. We are not going to be able to sell our homes because there's so much multifamily looking over into future backyards. So the reality is, whether this project is approved or denied, it's not going to be single-family housing on this track for an owner-occupied product. It is going to have to be some sort of rental product. Industrial, it's not compatible with the surrounding uses, it's very far from freeways, and it's too small of a development site. And then lastly, with multifamily, you know, as we've pointed out, it's compatible with the surroundings, and it's consistent with the PDC Broadway corridor plan, which calls for an urban product on these sites. So I'm going to talk about the general business, and then I'll pass it over to David Adame, who can talk about the multifamily. So you'll see here, this is a rendering of what we've put together for the general business. It's, it's very important to understand this site is going to be a mixed-use project. It's not just multifamily we're here asking you for. We're asking for a combination to create a walkable amenity. And so as you see, we are proposing to have a patio space and a central walking promenade to the multifamily that will feature tables, chairs, benches, all to encourage social gathering for residents that are going to live in the multifamily, as well as other residents of the existing multifamily in the area. We're also going to look to try to focus on services on, on this general business track rather than retail. We don't want to compete with the Asian Town. We want to bring coffee shops, restaurants, things that are more pedestrian-friendly. And, and one of the big things here, we're committing to building 5,000 square feet of the general business prior to the multifamily. And we're also committing to building the central walking promenade and 1,500 square feet of the outdoor patio space, all prior to the multifamily. So I know the city council from time to time gets proposals from developers that says, oh, we're going to bring you this mixed-use project, give us the multifamily, the rest of it's going to come later. Well, we're not doing that. We're here tonight telling you, if you give us multifamily, this will be mixed-use because we're committing to the development happening all at the same time. And so I'm going to turn it over to David to talk about the multifamily. Thank you.
David Adame with Alliance Residential, and I'll be the developer handling the development and construction of the multifamily project behind the GB. So this is a rendering of the project and, you know, gives a very good idea of exactly what this project will look like and feel like, and, and calling out and really wanting to, to talk about the four-story nature on this particular rendering. And what's indicative of that, you know, is, is the higher density, more urban, urban footprint and urban look that I think has been a growing kind of attraction here, particularly in Pearland. What comes along with that is the, the type of renter. And, and the type of renter that is, that fits this type of community and what our target market is, is that younger 25 to 40, you know, hardworking individual working in and around Pearland, serving the community with a very nice Class A market rent community to live in. And Alliance Residential, we do not do any subsidized housing, and, and we are not doing any here. It is 100% market rate in which we're planning to have rents that are at, at, at around top of market in Pearland. The, the thing I want to just introduce about Alliance conceptually is we continue to be a top developer nationally. And what's important about that is we, we have our, our geniuses- And what's important about that is we have our genesis and founding here based out of the Houston area. So we take a lot of pride in, you know, in what we do, and we have developed a track record over the last 25 years of development, starting here in Houston, now 19 offices across the country. But because of the type of product we build and the partners, the cities all across America, particularly like the partners in the city here of Pearland, to achieve these high standards and high qualities of development.
Excuse me. Again, Alan Mueller, I'm going to dig into some of the details on the PD document itself. Again, when we were here for the workshop, we felt like we had a really good project. And we think through all the iterations that we've gone through, we've made it even better and tighter. But just to restate, these are, you know, things that were in the original proposal that we've only tightened up since then. But again, as has been stated, you know, this meets the mixed use, you know, walkable goals that the city has established for this area. This product is over 800 feet to any single family uses with other uses buffered in between. So there, you know, there's no issues with the facilities looking over fences into backyards or anything like that. As David has mentioned, his company operates on 100% only market rents, and that's a specific commitment that's in the document. Also, the unit mix is no more than 75% one bedroom, the balance being two bedroom and no three bedroom units. So those are all commitments that are, you know, in the PD document. The buildings themselves, again, are that urban footprint, interior climate controlled corridors, elevators, and then highly amenitized recreational areas with the two courtyards, the dog park and the trail, which we'll dig into here in the next slides. So some of this has been covered, but just to make sure everybody understands, so I know the council knows this, but just for the public in general, you know, this is not straight multifamily zoning, which means that, you know, you just come in and follow the basic rules. This is a planned development, which means that there is a strict criteria that's put into this document. So this is a 32-page document that has all of the criteria and the regulations that we're going to have to follow that are way above and beyond a standard multifamily or general business, you know, property. So this first courtyard is the pool courtyard, be highly activated area. It's over, you know, almost a half an acre in size. It'll have the resort style pool, the cabanas, outdoor kitchen, you know, yard games, putting green. And then in addition, in this building, there's a large interior space that has the fitness center, game room, co-working space for the residents, as well as a catering kitchen, you know, for events. And then the second building has sort of a, sort of a lower intensity courtyard. It's, it has the, again, outdoor kitchen, flexible use lawn area that can be used for special events, you know, outdoor lighting, as well as, again, additional yard games for the residents. And again, all of these are specified and quantified in the document in terms of the quantity and the number and the location that have to be provided. Since the last time through this, this is something that we're really proud of. We talked about and Patrick mentioned, so one of the concerns that we heard was about, you know, open space and not over parking the facility. And so what we've been able to do is to create this green promenade that connects the two buildings. The prior iteration had that just completely with parking. And so what this does, it creates a third space for people to gather. There's additional yard games here, there's shading, shade structures. And then again, it connects the two buildings and just creates another walkable space between the buildings. And then looking at the overall site, again, you've seen this before, but a walking trail in the back with the dog park, the two courtyards on the two buildings, the green area connecting the two buildings, and then the green corridor connecting out into the general business tract. And again, that corridor connecting into the general business tract is highly specified in the document in terms of the timing, the size of it, and the dimensions and the things that need to be provided with that. So with that, I'm going to toss it back to David to talk about some of the specific amenities, and then I'll be back to wrap up.
Here are pictures of existing projects that have been recently taken to give the city and the public an idea of the amenities that we're offering. There will be no need or necessity for any of our residents to go anywhere but our property to live and to work, to play, to have fun, because we're offering more, you typically better than what, you know, they could find out in the area outside of this property. It's going to be a place where, and what always our goal is, is not just to collect rent, but to be able to provide family or an individual an opportunity to have their best quality of life. These are ways that you achieve that. And also to be able to have that and want to stick around and contribute and to participate in the local economy. We're going to have a lot of the, as I mentioned, younger individuals living here and working here, those who are building up to try to eventually earn and buy a home. And while they're doing that, they're going to get to enjoy these spaces. On the bottom right, you have an example of a co-working space with conference rooms. And we'll have plenty of that, a lot of the growing trend of work from home. And so we're meeting the demand there. The fitness center will be in line or better with anything that they'd be able to go and to have a monthly membership at. We'll have lounge space as well as additional amenity space and gathering spaces. For instance, kind of like a speakeasy bar where we'll have the ability for residents to come to congregate, to rent out for parties, for birthdays and so forth. These are examples of that. Our pool will be a resort style pool. And so in kind of an urban setting, similar to kind of a more urban footprint project like this, it gives you an idea of what we're able to do and what we plan to do here on Oak Road. The kind of rent, the kind of profile and, you know, the makeup of who our residents are. And again, currently in our existing portfolio, we have 38 projects, 12,000 units all across South Texas. And these are the types of renters that we see typically working or that live in our projects and their jobs. You know, again, in the market rate and the quality that we build, we expect to see a very similar profile here. And the, again, going back to the specific makeup of the unit mix of 75% one bedrooms, you know, that, we will have a predominant, you know, one bedroom and one car, you know, one bedroom and one car type of situation overall as a majority of the, you know, of the project makeup, and which allows us to, as we talked with staff, to get to a point, a happy point where the parking met the demand, where we were able to add enough open space as well and add that extra additional amenity space. We don't want to put too much parking and then we can't, you know, we can't add that open space where this parking is really not going to be needed as be a lot of one bedrooms to serve, one parking spaces to serve those one bedrooms. And here's just kind of a makeup of what we had put together from the original presentation and kind of highlighting how the demand for product, rental product and Class A product in Pearland and how the city has continued to outperform and be a focal point for our target renter to come and move here, because a lot of them have goals of eventually living and buying home here and building their families here. Most recently, the Delta Pearland in a location further south in this site set a record really for a lease up in the greater Houston area, which was very phenomenal, pointing to the demand for this product in and around Pearland at 45 leases per month, which was, which was quite a feat.
Just continuing off of what David was mentioning about the typical tenants, kind of working from the bottom up, there are other products around Houston. Generally, again, 55% of the folks that are living in their units are going to work within a five male radius. So those largely are going to be locally serving folks here in Pearland. Some are certainly going to be commuting to other employment centers, but largely they're focusing on the local market here in Pearland. With that mix of units that we were talking about, again, that would be about 50 school age children in a typical complex that they have. We did meet with the school superintendent and he did confirm that all schools that this product would flow to do have capacity. So that would be Carleston, Jameson, Junior High South, and Dawson all have capacity to handle the students that would be coming from this property. We mentioned again that we've added a lot of commitments since the workshop, and so we've been through three revisions cycles with the city staff and tried to be very responsive to what we've heard. So, and is also what we heard from the first workshop. So first, just kind of going down the list, we've enhanced and quantified the landscaping that, again, that's in the PD, and not the least of which is specifying, again, that all the, all the trees will exceed the minimum three inches versus two inch, as well as a variety of other commitments that are in the document in terms of the amount of landscaping. Having some outdoor patio units was important, and so we've committed in the document to 40 first floor units that would have private yards, which are, you know, great for people with pets. And then also committed on the second through fourth floors, a minimum of 30 units that would have balconies, but also committed that none of those would be facing Broadway on the north side of the building. There was a concern about fencing the first time around, and so we've modified that. We now have the ornamental iron all the way around the property as opposed to a portion of it being wood. As Patrick mentioned, we agreed to limit that one's multi-tenant sign on the Broadway for the general business property. And also, the document lists 46 uses that are generally allowed in general business that we have voluntarily removed, that will not be permitted, that are not consistent with the vision of what we have for this PD. As we've continued to listen and learn as we've gone through this project, you know, we've continued to hear concerns about traffic. And so just, again, you've seen this before as well, but the traffic on, the 2024 traffic on Broadway, just under 29,000 vehicles per day. We have not yet completed the TIA for this property, but similar properties that Alliance has developed, you can see the trip generation in the AM and PM peak periods. Again, that's not a full day's worth of traffic, but that's when the most of the traffic is going to be generated in those AM and PM peaks. And so, again, this property alone is not a great contributor to the overall situation there, but we are certainly aware that traffic in this area is already a concern. So in speaking with city staff, as well as Tech dot, we know that a traffic signal is actually warranted there today with current conditions, even without any further development happening. And so what, as we have continued to learn and listen through the here, again, what we're understanding from Tech dot is that they will be installing a permanent signal at this location when they widen the road. But that currently best case scenario is probably 2031, when the road will be completed. And so what we're offering this evening, a commitment that we will add to the PD, is that we will begin the permitting process for a interim signal that'll be located at Oak and Broadway. We have had preliminary conversations with Tech dot, who says that they will agree to permit that signal. There's certainly a process we have to go through, but we're committing that we would start that process and install that by the third quarter of next year, which would be '26. And so by doing that, that would bring forward by five years, the point in time in which a traffic signal would be located at this intersection. And again, that's, that's going to be a general benefit to the community, even though this product, project alone is a small contributor, but the, we are willing to make that commitment. Second thing we have heard is certainly concerns around public safety. And so we did meet with the public, you know, the crime prevention officer from the police department. And one of the things that they talked about was the city has this network of license plate reader cameras that are throughout the community, which is a great tool that the police department has in terms of being able to deter crime, but also be able to track crime as well. And so in speaking with the police department, what, again, what we will add to the PD for the second reading is that we will commit to installing two Flock cameras, that's the brand name, Flock license plate reader cameras on Oak Road, so south of Broadway, so that would catch the entering cars and the exiting cars. And so that, again, we believe is a general benefit to the community and really, you know, it really enhances the safety of our community as well. So we understand that, you know, some of the surrounding areas have had a, you know, concern with crime. We're not so much concerned about, you know, our residents, you know, committing crimes, but we think as a general benefit, this is going to help the surrounding community as well as help our residents as well. So I think we'll stop there. And again, just wanted to, and thank everybody for your time, staff's time for helping us through this process. We're continuing to learn and listen as we go. We know there's a lot of neighbors here who have concerns that they want to express, and we're certainly willing to continue to learn and hear what those concerns are and do our best to address those. And thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. We will move to the public portion of the public hearing. I believe we have a couple of people who did sign up to speak directly, so we'll go to those first before opening it up to the floor. Mayor Protem, if you'll introduce them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you get started, and you can pull that down for you if you like.
Thank you.
There you go. Are you representing yourself or the neighborhood? As you get five minutes, if it's a neighbor.
Oh, no, I'm only representing myself.
Okay. Well, state your name and you've got three minutes then.
Okay. My name is Anastasia Cox. I live at 7704 Misty Lake Lane in Avalon Terrace. I am here tonight to respectfully but firmly oppose the proposed 315-unit apartment complex across from our subdivision along 518. Avalon Terrace already deals with ongoing safety and quality of life concerns directly related to the nearby Reserve at Tranquility Lakes apartment. Despite clearly posted no trespassing signage and numerous calls to Pearland Police Department, we have been repeatedly told enforcement will not occur in our neighborhood after having repeatedly had our pool broken into and our park vandalized. As a result of the misuse and vandalism of our community properties and law enforcement not doing anything, we have had to manage the problem ourselves. Before adding another high-density development, it is reasonable to expect the current issues to be addressed. If the police are not able or willing to support one nearby apartment complex, is it difficult to understand how adding a second one of this size will not improve the situation? Traffic safety is another major concern for us, and I know that's been a big topic tonight. Vehicles exist, I'm sorry. Vehicles exiting the Reserve at Tranquility Lake routinely misuse the center turning lane, sometimes driving the full length of the lane or entering oncoming traffic to bypass vehicles waiting to turn into Avalon Terrace. This behavior already creates dangerous conditions for drivers, pedestrians, and children. We understand that a traffic impact analysis is not currently required. However, the lack of a requirement does not eliminate the need for one. With large developments such as the Asia Town project underway and increasing congestion along 518, approving another 350 units without traffic analysis is not planning, it's guessing. And guessing with public safety is unacceptable. We're not opposed to responsible growth. We are opposed to growth that ignores existing problems, overwhelms infrastructure, and compromises neighborhood safety. For these reasons, I respectfully request that the city deny or at minimum delay the approval of this project until police enforcement concerns can be addressed and full transparent traffic impact analysis is completed and reviewed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Forsberg? And you'll be representing the neighborhood, correct? And you'll be representing the neighborhood, correct? Just yourself, okay. You've got three minutes as well. State your name, and thank you for being here.
I might go a tad over, so maybe I am representing the neighborhood. Good evening, Mayor Cole, council and residents of the community. My name is Victoria Forsberg. I reside at 7502 River Pass Drive in Avalon Terrace. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm here regarding the proposed 315-unit multifamily and retail development at 518 and Oak Road across from Avalon Terrace. Our community is not anti-growth, but we are concerned about adding this much density to a corridor that is already heavily congested before infrastructure is in place to support it. Asia Town is a 126,000-square-foot commercial development at our entrance, not open to date, but when it does open, it will add major daily traffic to an area that is already over capacity. Adding 315 more units and retail directly across from it at the same intersection, the impact on residents is immediate and unavoidable, especially with permanent traffic signal improvements still years away. A few additional realities about this corridor. 518 between Cullen and Reed is classified by Tech Dot as a congested and high-crash corridor. While widening is planned, the area has not yet been funded. The permanent Oak Road traffic light is years out, not operational until at least 2028, but more likely 2030 or beyond, depending on construction timeline. Other corridor pressures include a Reed Road and Max Road expansion to Beltway Eight, a proposed charter school near Food Town, and a large residential tract between Cliffstone and Hughes Ranch Road. These projects directly affect safety and mobility of our residents and the broader Pearland community. I do not drive 518 every day, but I live here, and my neighbors live here. We experience the long backups entering and leaving our subdivision, school buses struggling to turn, and emergency vehicles fighting heavy traffic. These are not hypothetical impacts, they are daily reality. Timing matters. Development should follow infrastructure, not race ahead of it. Until the 518 improvements between Cullen and Reed are fully funded and underway, with the necessary traffic changes in place to safely manage additional volume, approving 315 new units at this location is premature. I welcome being a part of city-led community dialogue as this corridor continues to grow. Avalon Terrace wants to be a partner in thoughtful, responsible planning. Based on the facts in front of us today, I respectfully ask council to vote no on this planned development at this time. Let's make sure the road is ready. Let's make sure our families are safe, and then let's talk about new development when the foundation is truly there. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, we'll open it up to the floor for those wishing to offer testimony. Give us your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
I'm going to make it short and sweet because it's going to be ditto. I'm Laura Lee Joseph. I live with 2013 Rolling Hills Drive in Avalon Terrace. So, like I said, it's going to be ditto to what everything Stacy said, Victoria said, but I wanted to also add to that. It's not just 315 units. It is the traffic coming in, what everyone has already said tonight. We're talking about Asia Township, Asia Town Center going up. We're talking about traffic cutting through Avalon Terrace to get out onto the other side if there's an accident. So we already have a multi-unit area, so there's two of them. There's the Reserve, which is roughly 315 units. Then we have Lake Point, which is another 274 units. So that's 588 units just on that block alone. Then you look on to the other side where you have Tranquility, which is another 212. So now, just dealing with Oak Road, we're talking about 588 plus another 315. If my math is correct, we're talking between all three, plus that, 800 units. That's a lot. And that's right across the street from our subdivision, right behind, which is right behind Asia Town when it's all said and done. So it's not just 315, it's 800 when it's all said and done. That's all I'll have to say.
Elma Williams, I live on Misty Lake Lane within Avalon Terrace. I built in 2009, and since living there, I've experienced major issues. I have small children. Whenever there's an issue between Reed and Cullen, all that traffic, Avalon Terrace becomes a main cut-through. I'm talking, everything that comes off 518 comes through our neighborhood. I have to sit in my front yard and watch an endless parade of traffic. Now we've got Asia Town about to open, multi-businesses on the other side, and again, when you add all the other units, I have to exit Oak Road to get on 518, just to handle my normal family business. I can sit there 20 to 30 minutes sometimes, trying to get in and out of the subdivision, running the risk of somebody slamming into me because they're coming off Oak Road from the other side, they want to turn, traffic is not fluctuating on their timeframe. It's extremely dangerous. Not only that, I have school-aged children. There've been accidents. Their bus is being delayed. Sometimes the buses have to go all the way around and come up Max Road, Reed Road, to get, to come in our backside. It's a lot, and it's extremely overwhelming. Please put yourself in my place. This is my forever home. I'm not saying don't do it, I'm saying do it right. And what's being proposed right now is not right. Thank you.
My name is Lawrence Greiser. I live in Avalon Terrace since 2010. Thank you, Mayor, and City Council for listening to us tonight. I just want to express my concerns about this development and ask you to vote no on it. There's a couple of things with the traffic, the neighbors from the existing apartment complex coming over and trespassing into our community, using our pools, damaging our facilities, things like that. That's happened. The police response hasn't been great, but it's happened. We're just worried that more of that is going to happen with another 300 and some units on the other side. As well as with Asia Town being developed, they mentioned that, I'm sorry, this developer mentioned that they're going to try to do a temporary stoplight out there. We've been in discussions with the Asia Town developer since January of 2024 to get one out there, and it was already supposed to be out there. I don't know if they know it yet, but it's been a two-year wait already. The traffic's insane. It's just, like I said, traveling east, or eastbound on 518, you'll have people come out of those apartments on the south side of Oak Road, and they'll go into oncoming traffic, they'll cut down the left-hand turn lane in front of you. We've been hit, or almost hit multiple times by it. It's just, with Asia Town being built, that's 170,000 square feet of retail space directly across the street from this already. 125,000 for the grocery store, and the rest is eight to 11 different anchor stores already there, plus 1,100 parking spots. There's no way that we're going to be able to handle that kind of traffic. 1,100 parking spots there, plus another 300, 300 to 600, depending on how many cars each apartment has. It's going to be crazy. And with nothing in the plans, you've got 518 widening that's going to happen, you've got them, they want to build the apartment complex, as well as Asia Town being developed now. That's three projects going to be going out right at that intersection all at one time. I just ask you to vote no on this. Thank you.
Last call for those wishing to offer testimony. Seeing no one moving in that direction, we'll move it to City Council for questions, comments, and concerns. A couple of things, Ms. Forsberg, that section of road has been funded. It is in final design. So that, from Cullen back all the way to McLean, is in final design with Ardua as the design team. So Tech Dot has funded that section of roadway. Just want to let you know. Yeah. Right, yeah. So just to bring you up to, just bring you up to speed, the whole section from 288 all the way to McLean has been, has now been funded through Tech Dot. Also, there at Oak Road, the existing Asian Town, I know they're not on the deal tonight, but to bring some color, because we keep talking about Asian Town and the amount of traffic and about a potential light there. The current HOA in Avalon Terrace won't allow access to Oak Road or that Asian Town developer. So they don't have access to it to be able to bring traffic there and create a light. So that's been part of the issue that they have had. So they're coming directly out to 518 where Tech Dot will not allow for a light. So there's a lot of, and with the widening of the road, Tech Dot is scheduling to put a traffic, a signal, traffic signal in. That is part of the plans. Like I said, these guys are willing to do some temporary facilities now that brings it to, you know, to put it into place. So just want to make sure that we put that on the table as what's happening in that corridor from Tech Dot's perspective. I've talked to Tech Dot directly about Asian Town and what is required of them, and it would be better for flow of traffic if they had access to Oak and out, but also understand the concerns that you guys have of where that traffic may go into the neighborhood. So it's a double-edged sword coming out onto Broadway, you know, right there where it's at. What other, like I said, I wanted to bring clarity to the funding for that part of the roadway as well. With that, we'll open up questions and comments from council.
This is kind of a tough one. Honestly, I don't know what else would go here. I appreciate, where are you, Mr. Monti Betti, pointing out you've talked to single-family residential developers. I know when we have proposed multifamily next to single-family, that's always the objection. We don't want multifamily around our single-family. So it makes sense that the single-family developers wouldn't want to go build where single-family residences do. I would ask, have you guys spoken with Avalon Terrace and addressed any of their concerns? I guess Alan, yep, you can, while you're making your way up there, I will say that I don't know that I've seen a developer make as many efforts as has been put forward with this package to try to make a project work for the community, including, and a second question for you, Alan, make sure I understand what you guys are proposing. You're proposing to fund maintaining that traffic signal there until Tech Dot builds their signal, correct? Not just until your project opens?
Correct. So to answer, second question first, yes. So we would commit to building that signal, be on a temporary signal, so it wouldn't be the pretty signal, but it would be a fully functional signal at that intersection. Again, to be completed by the end of next year, third quarter of next year, and then it would stay in place until Tech Dot comes through and builds the permanent signal. So it would be there, again, it would move that five years forward in time. You know, absent this project and absent this commitment, there's no signal there for probably five years at least. Back to your first question, when we first became aware that there was concerns coming from the neighborhood, I did just reach out to Ms. Forsberg yesterday via email. That's, I'm remiss, I should have done that sooner. Again, because our project is so far removed from that community, I just did not really anticipate the type of concerns. But I think mostly what I'm hearing is traffic, which I'm hoping that we can have addressed that with the traffic signal. And then I've also heard about public safety concerns, which I think we are addressing with the license plate reader cameras. Certainly happy to continue a dialogue with the community, and again, that's certainly my fault for not doing that sooner.
Thank you for that. And then my other question would be in relation to the public safety. I don't know if now's the right time, or if the PD can speak to some of those claims made as far as the issues going on in the community. Has anybody, can we speak to that? Should we speak to that?
In regards to Avalon Terrace?
Yes, the residents have commented that there's been issues, people breaking into their property and whatnot, and that, I don't know exactly how it was said, that PD's refusing? Is that what you said? Could you, sorry?
I'm only going to speak for the conversations that I have had. I have called several times for trespassers in our pool after hours. Our pool closes at eight. This has been well into the evening. I've been, I have obviously board members that are behind me, and I have had board members ask for these people to be trespassed from our public pool, or our community pool, as well as our park. And I have been told, no, that they're not going to trespass them. They gave them a warning and they let them go. And that has been for the last four times that I have called the police. And I don't want to sound like a serial police caller, because I'm not, but after hours in my community pool is a problem because that makes us liable for things.
Understood. Thank you for the clarification.
And real quick, I do have a follow-up to that, real quick. And were those four calls made this calendar year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mayor, this was since we've been annexed.
I'm just trying to offer a baseline of time.
Yeah, and that's typically what we'll get, is we'll get a response from the dispatcher. Hey, it's not our problem, that's HOA property. I said, but they're trespassing, they're, you know, it's a criminal offense. Can we get them warned? Can we get something, you know, get them removed? And we'll just get blown off by them, and they're not interested in doing it.
Well, we may have the attention tonight.
Thank you all for that clarification, so if we could speak to that.
Councilmember, did you want me to answer that question?
Please can.
So there have been 14 calls for service out there. Six were determined to be residents that actually lived there. They were just there past the appropriate time, which was 8:00 p.m. There have been five instances where no one was at the pool, an officer actually went out there, nobody was there. Two individuals, that they went out there on two separate calls, left the pool without incident. There were no other concerns, and there was one other traffic violation. But we have been out there 14 times since January.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. It felt like there may be a communication issue if we're, they feel like there's people that are needing to be trespassed because they're not allowed to be there, but maybe that's something we can clear.
And we'll be more than glad to go out there, send our community outreach officer out there to build that relationship and clarify any miscommunication.
Excuse me, Mayor, if I could interrupt.
And it may be best that y'all just, we just have a conversation and ask the officer to meet with you guys afterwards.
I was just going to suggest that this may not be relevant to the existing zone change request, and I think we're going beyond the scope of that request, and we'd hate for anybody to get in trouble with the Attorney General.
Thoroughly noted, and that's why we diverted there. Other questions, comments?
I'm sorry, if we could just elaborate on the traffic signal, just.
Oh, okay. That portion of it?
The first portion of that, and I just wanted to reiterate that there's a commitment that, and I'm reiterating this because it is a commitment we're talking about now, and it's not in the original, in the PD that was put before council, but our commitment is that there's a timeline put on that signal, and that is for a specific quarter of next year. That is going to be before the multifamily apartments ever open up, it's going to be tied to our occupancy permit. And in fact, no matter how long it takes to, for the apartments to design and permit, start construction, whatever that, however that delays, on and on and so forth. on and so forth, that timeline of the commitment of the installation is set in stone. It's a fix.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you go to your Slide 1 presentation, please? Yep. So, I'll tell you what's so confusing to me. On your Slide 1, in the very beginning, you used the word proposed mixed use. This slide? One back, please. The very first one. Yep, right there. In my world, mixed use is a lot more than 5,000 retail, right? To me, it sounds like what you guys want really is the apartment. That's the main piece of pie you want, and you're dangling this carrot to say, oh, we'll build you. And on one of the slide, I believe on Slide 3, if you go to Slide 3, I apologize. Maybe it was Slide 6. It says, right there, let me read it. Minimum of 5,000 feet of construct, or beginning construction. So, what does that mean, beginning? I'm assuming you break ground, maybe you put a bulldozer on there, get a permit?
Sure. Couple of things, and then Nick can certainly add to it. But I'm fully aware that there's been a lot of people in front of this body, you know, proposing to do mixed use communities, and the multifamily comes first, or the residential comes first, or something. So, again, similar to what the Motametti family did on the Smith Ranch project, in order to alleviate that, there's a, same thing here, is committing to build, to start the general business at the same time. And it's not just, you know, multifamily here and, you know, general business over here. It's an integrated plan. There's requirements for pedestrian gates. There's requirements for pedestrian connectivity. And so, again, that is specifically to alleviate that concern that the multifamily gets built and the general business never gets built. And so, to answer, I think to answer the second part of your question, Nick can probably do a better job than I.
I think, you know, the 5,000 square feet is not our intention to be the final product, right? I mean, on Smith Ranch, for example, Rockefeller's doing 6,000 square feet. We're already designing our other pad site for a multi-tenant center on that. And I think the City Council knows us, and we've always been a partner with the city, and we've worked with you all, and our intention is to continue to do that. And, you know, the 5,000 square feet is just, we want to be clear that we're committing to do that, but by no means it's actually going to be the final product. It's four acres, right? I mean, it's going to be a much more significant development than 5,000 square feet.
Yeah, and I guess my flip script to you would be, Nick, I'd rather you build the commercial lot, and then you build the apartments, right? But you guys want to build the apartments because that's where the money is. Now, hold on, hold on. And so, to me, you're not committing to saying we're going to finish 5,000 square foot before you start construction or finish the apartment. You're saying we'll break ground and we'll have something down there. Just out of curiosity, how many square foot is the apartment?
Possibility of 290,000 square feet.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
290,000 overall.
Let's just round it up to 300,000, right? So, you're talking about, you're going to drop in the bucket, 5,000 divided by 300,000, you're talking about less than 2% of commercial mixed use. You call it mixed use, but it's really less than 2% of it's going to be commercial, but the rest is residential. And let me get this real quick.
Can I address that real quick?
I'm sorry?
Can I address that comment?
Sure.
I'm willing to commit to a higher amount, if that's what you ask. And I'm also willing to commit to doing it before the multifamily starts. I mean, we have no intention of not doing that product. We will build it, and we'll build more square footage if that's what you want us to do.
So, what is your full build-out on that four acres?
It's probably going to be about 25,000 square feet.
So, you're committing to building all 25,000 square?
I'm not going to, I can't commit to 25. I'll build to 10,000 square feet, and we can build.
So, you're going to go from 2% to 4%, okay. So, let me just tell you why I'm against this project, Nick. And I know Alan tried to call me to meet with me. And I'll say, the problem is the residents that live there, right? They're having a problem with the traffic. Traffic light is one thing, but there's still going to be, how many parking spots do you have in this place? I would say 600 at least?
We wanted to pull up the exact number here. 164.
So, 464. So, I'm assuming, I'm assuming from your experience, that you need those spaces, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I know Alan has shown a slide that 110 at the peak hours in AM and 130 at PM. But you think about the amount of traffic that apartment complex will add already to what we have there, right? Besides that 400, some cars, you got Uber, Eats, you got Amazon packages, delivery packages coming in and out, adding more to that traffic count, right? And I feel the pain these residents are under. When they bought their house, this was not designed for an apartment, right? So, I'm assuming some of them, maybe not all of them, looked at what's around the area, and they probably said, hey, this is nice green space. Now, granted, you can go build small apartment, or small individual, small lots. And I think a while back ago, and maybe one of my council members can remind me, we had the same scenario. When an apartment wanted to come in, we denied it, and then they came back to build small lot homes. And I think it was, who was the developer? An old town site? Who was the old developer? Sullivan Brothers. So, they actually got it approved, and they're building the small lot homes.
But it wasn't multifamily to begin with.
It was something else.
It was, it was, it was small, small homes on small lots.
Yeah, something, but I don't, something before that was going to go there.
They dressed the product up, is all they did.
So, you know, the idea that, hey, no one wants to build this product, it's not true. I think what I'm looking for is ownership in our community, right? I don't think any of these residents would say, don't build small homes there. Because obviously, a lot of starter homes can't afford today, and they need to be on a smaller footprint. And so, I would rather tell you, I know you're not in that business, but I'm all for getting smaller homes, smaller footprints, and have ownership there than a bunch of apartments. So, for that reason, I can support your project. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, we'll move...
Excuse me, Mayor. I just wanted to ask if there are people who are concerned about the traffic as described by the citizens, one of the issues is advancing the signal, and we've heard about that. One of the issues in regards to safety was the flock cameras. One of the other things that I'm aware of in adjacent developers is that they're doing interim median improvements as required by Tech dot on 518. And I think you heard something about people abusing the center turn lanes or something like that in the testimony tonight. I don't know if that's something that the council would consider, or if the developer would consider. But if this is going to go forward, and you want it to have some sort of interim median improvements, that might be something to consider as well.
All right. So, with that, we will close this doctored public hearing, and we will move to new business item number three. Mr. Byron, would you place that on the table, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consideration possible action, new business, item number three. Where is it? First reading of ordinance, number 2000M-276.
We have a motion, a second. We've had staff report, citizen input, as well as questions and comments from council. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Mayor Proton Byron.
Hi.
Member Coza.
Hey.
Member Carbone. Member Chaviria?
No.
Member Gade?
No.
Member Fernandez?
No.
Member Patel?
No.
Motion fails one to six.
With that, we'll move to public hearing number four. Really rolling now. Patrick, you're up.
Give just a second.
Take a break. All right. Let's take a recess for about 10 minutes.
Patrick, you good to go?
Yep, ready.
Thank you.
This is a request by Enrique and Lisa Cruz, owners for approval of a conditional use permit for an expansion to an existing auto repair minor use within the Old Town General Business, OTGB District on approximately 0.4224 acres of land. And the general location is 2121 Main Street. So the applicant is proposing to enclose an existing 240 square foot carport along the northern property line to be used as a bay for additional auto repair services to be conducted. Today's staff has not received any comments in support or against, and we are required to send notices to all proprietors within 200 feet, and signs are posted on the property. So here we get a look at the subject property. It's surrounded mostly by the Old Town General Business District, which makes sense, that's along Main Street. And we have some Old Town mixed use to the east. And the surrounding uses include a boutique to the north, a day habilitation program to the east, a restaurant to the south, and a fast food restaurant to the west across Main Street. In terms of the future land use plan, the property is within the commercial center place type, and an auto repair facility is consistent with that place type. So here we get a look at the, where the proposed expansion is specifically being proposed. Main Street is on the bottom of your screen, and so A and B are marked out, and it'll get a little clearer once I show the street view images. Essentially, A and B are two different carports. Their areas are not currently enclosed, and specifically, they're proposing to enclose the one marked out as A, which is along the property line, and along this red bulleted area is a fence line. And then the main building where the auto repair services are currently occurring is this main area outlined. So these are kind of just stock photos that the applicant provided of what it may look like, what the expansion they're looking to build may look like in the end. And so I have two different images. The one on the left-hand side is actually the front view if I'm standing on Main Street, and the outlined yellow is that carport that they're looking to enclose, and essentially the expansion is actually enclosed, so auto repair services can be conducted in there. Likely, it's just used, it's been used for a while, it's just maybe cars parked under there. So that's the front view of the existing carport. The right-hand image is the back view of that existing carport. And then just looking a little bit closer, just to show you how close things are, the existing side setback is shown here, the fence is roughly on the property line, the poles a couple inches, maybe half a foot to a foot off of the property line. And then one thing to note is that the applicant is aware of that, and they've noted that they're gonna have to repair the roof. You can kind of see, maybe hard to tell with the main screen out there, but there's holes in the roof, so existing roof repair is needed. So staff found the proposed CUP meets six out of the seven approval criteria for approval of a CUP, and specifically, it related to criterion seven, which has to do with whether the proposed CUP meets the zoning regulations and whether variances have been requested. And so the Old Town General Business District requires a side setback for any, like, main building to be 10 feet. This is an existing structure, obviously not within 10 feet, so they'd have to request a variance to be able to put it within that area. They have requested a variance pending CUP, so that would be one that they don't currently meet because it's in staff's opinion that while, while they have that carport there, they can provide for an expansion that actually does meet the 10-foot, because approximately, based on their survey, they have roughly 30 to 33 feet in between that building and the northern property line. So they have, in staff's opinion, they have space to do an expansion that could meet the side setbacks, and the side setbacks are meant to kind of separate uses, especially with an auto repair use. You may not want that use to be exactly directly on the property line. And so while staff is recommending approval of the expansion to the existing auto repair facility, staff supports, as I mentioned, maintaining those area requirements and the setback requirements for the OTGB District. And so the current site, as mentioned, has adequate space on the north side of the building for an expansion that meets the required side yard setback. And so therefore, staff recommends approval of the request with the following condition: the proposed expansion of the existing auto repair facility shall meet all setback requirements within the Old Town General Business District. And so this request went to P&amp;Z at their November 3, 2025 meeting. They kind of had discussions about whether they should just go straight to variance, or they should just approve the CUP just for the use. And so in the end, P&amp;Z voted 6-0 to recommend approval of the requested CUP for the expansion without staff's recommended condition. I'll pass it back to you, Mayor.
All right, thank you for that. I see the applicant present. Welcome to both of you. Do you have a presentation, or just here to answer questions?
I do not. I'm Lisa Cruz. My husband Enrique Cruz and I own Cruz and Cars, and we recently purchased this, this property, which has been in place since 1975 as an auto repair facility. It was, it was the Chevron Station for many, many years, and then it became Pearland Auto Inspection, and then now we've purchased it. And basically, we, it's in disrepair, I guess would be the word. It's been there since 1975, and it has not seen a lot of love recently, but we are here to change that. We are here to renovate it, expand it, bring it back to its glory days, and make it a beautiful corner on Main Street. We have no traffic issues, y'all, none. This will not affect traffic. So our, the request is so simple that, no, I really haven't prepared anything. Everything that Patrick said is anything that I would say. So all I'm here to do is to request that you, that you approve our ability to expand and improve on this old, this old historic, what's it called, landmark. It's almost a landmark, because everyone we say, oh yeah, we bought the old Chevron Station, they're like, really? And they're like, are you gonna do anything with it? We're like, yes, we're gonna make it beautiful again.
Sounds good. If we have any questions when we get back to you, we'll have you up. Thank you for both being here, and enduring the evening, so thank you for that. With that, we will move to public portion. Those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request can go to the podium, give your name, have three minutes to speak. Second request, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Third and final time, those wishing to speak and offer testimony, go to the podium and give us your name and address, or name, and three minutes to speak. Seeing no one moving in that direction, we will move to questions, comments, concerns from City Council. Next up, Mr. Kozak.
Thank you, Mayor. Lisa or Ricky, could you go to the podium, please? So with this slide up here, you're wanting to expand on the section that's labeled A here. Just curiosity, as far as are you planning on, if, if you were to get this approved, B just being a drive-through?
Do you want to explain the reason we chose A instead of B?
It's a larger.
That'll work, too.
Yes, it's bigger. Okay, so what we're intending to put in there is an alignment machine. An alignment machine requires what's called a four-post lift, which is a very large, a fairly large piece of equipment, and it's a long piece of equipment. And carport A is a much longer piece of, piece of building than, than B. So that was the reason for choosing to ask to renovate and enclose carport B instead of carport A.
Right, so in, in the pictures of, of the two buildings or structures that, that were proposed for kind of what it might look like, are you planning on using that existing framework, or are you looking at tearing it down and, and building something?
We would, we would use the existing framework, build, build on, build on the existing framework.
Okay. That's what I was curious, thank you.
All right. Mr. Carbone?
Yep. Will you go to the staff's recommendations? And I guess, explain maybe in a little bit simpler, because it's late, what P&amp;Z passed? They passed it without staff's recommended condition?
Essentially, the staff recommended that, hey, if they're gonna expand, they're, well, it's an existing carport, it's something new on the property, so they're doing new work on the property, so let's ensure that that new work meets the code requirements. And they said, it's an existing structure. They kind of, different members kind of focused on, hey, it's an existing structure, let's give them their time to, if they want to request a variance to enclose it, leave that up to ZBA to say, is there a hardship, or is there? Because it'd be looked at, not as a special exception, it'd be looked at as, hey, it's a variance to say, it's an existing structure, is there a hardship? And leave that up to ZBA to do. That's kind of what the conversation went.
So, so we pass it, as is tonight, we're okay with the use, but then they've got to go apply for a variance?
Correct, if they want to have it where they're proposing. If they want to have it at 10 feet?
Well, that's, we clearly know what they want to do.
Yeah.
So we pass it tonight, they still have to go get back in line for a ZBA, and you're saying the ZBA is probably gonna deny it.
Say what the ZBA will do, I'll say staff, ours is focused on hardship, so approval criteria will be, it's very clear about hardship. They may see the existing structure and say, we're trying to help out an existing business. That's the purview of the ZBA to decide staff will like.
Staff's gonna recommend, is gonna say, there's not a hardship, so we pass this tonight, goes to the ZBA, ZBA, if they listen to staff, is gonna deny it. Is there anything we can do tonight to fast-track this? Or, I mean, is there any, is there anything we can add?
What, what happens if they pass it with staff's recommendation?
Right.
So I say they pass with staff's recommendation, and Lauren, you may correct me if I'm wrong here, it can't vary what the CUP is, because then it kind of defunks the CUP, because now you're going against the condition. So this would essentially, for lack of better, save them time about going to variance, having to spend that money on the variance to say, hey, we understand you have an existing business, but if you want to expand that business, you need to meet the required side setback.
Which defeats what they're trying to do.
Right, so they've sat here all night, and we go with option A, it's a no-go, option B, it's a no-go, but we're gonna delay it for another month or two, and then goes to ZBA?
Yeah, ZBA will be, I could fast-track it to a month, but still got notice requirements that it gotta hit.
And if it gets turned down there, you get to go in front of a district court for reversal. So it's not, it doesn't come back to.
The CUP, the CUP process is not allowed to grant variances that the ZBA has the authority to do. So there is a specific provision in the UDC that prevents that from happening. So you can grant an expansion, but it wouldn't be where A is. If you don't go with staff's proposed condition, then they have to still go to ZBA, and we don't know how that would work. However, if you say, I will go forward with staff's recommendation to approve the, the CUP, however, I want staff's condition, then they no longer have to go to ZBA, because that staff condition's going to force it to be where B carport is instead of where A carport is. So they don't have to go through that process, because you've already limited it, and they don't get that proposed use. It actually saves them, it doesn't accomplish what they want in terms of location, but it does accomplish what they want in terms of use for that location.
So the question is, does the alignment machine fit in carport B?
And I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know whether carport B can be expanded the way that they want.
It is much more favorable in A, but we can make it fit into B. We can make it work. A is our first choice, B would be our second.
So option A, we go one route tonight, we approve it, you can go to ZBA, ZBA is gonna hear that staff says no, there's no appeal right to come back to us, and.
Goes to district court.
Goes to district court.
Or they go to B.
Or we can, you can decide to go to B tonight, and you're done tonight. Right?
They could go to B.
They, they can fall back to B if ZBA doesn't.
Which would bring it back here, spending $500 to ZBA, another thousand back here.
Oh, okay. Again, we've, we've mentioned a hardship. There is some financial hardship. Before we realized that so much, so many permits and so many zoning variances were needed, we did already pour concrete into A, but. At what cost? At about $10,000.
Unfortunately, the hardship is defined by state law, and the pouring of the concrete would not.
Wouldn't qualify.
Would not qual, I, I don't believe it would meet that definition according to state law. The UDC, when it defines hardship, reflects or mirrors what state law says, so.
Okay.
Kozak?
Yeah, I had another question. Martin Vance, on the proposed, whether it's A or B, either one, what threshold does that put the, the enlargement? Are we crossing that 15% where it kicks in other things, or where are we at on that?
I think for that question, Mr. Kozak, or Councilmember Kozak, this expansion is less than the 500 square foot and less than the 15%, so there are no additional triggers, which is why you don't see conditions recommended.
I just, I just wanted to make sure, because there weren't any square footages on here, so that's why I was just curious. All right, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Kate?
Okay, but part A is already there, is that right?
Yes, it's an existing structure.
Okay, so.
Part A is considered a carport, which is an accessory structure, whereas they would like to not make it a, an accessory structure. They want it to be part of the, they want it to be a building instead of an accessory structure.
So it's okay for it to stay an accessory structure?
That, that was my understanding from staff's analysis.
Yeah, and it is an accessory structure, and I'll say also. Yeah, and it is an accessory structure, and I'll say also, accessory structures are required to be five feet back from the property line. This is existing, so unless you tear it down, you don't have to come back and meet the five feet. It's just, it's been on the site, it's been from 1975, but it's existing as it sits.
They're trying to improve it, make it look better, but y'all are gonna deny it.
And enclose it. They're looking to enclo, they're looking to change it from being just an accessory structure, where people don't occupy every day and do auto repairs, to an enclosed space that'll have a heightened standard from a building perspective.
What, is the hardship definition quickened? Something you can say quickly, or is it lengthy?
I could find it quickly for you.
What?
I don't have it pulled up right now, but I can find it for you.
I thought you probably had it memorized, Lawrence, from legal, but, um.
I apologize for disappointing you.
Thank you.
Um, I guess this question is probably primarily for staff, um, or, or, or maybe for you guys. Have you guys done engineering on this? And, I mean, are they gonna be required to meet structural requirements, windstorm requirements, all that kind of thing? Because we're not just talking about slapping siding on a carport, we're talking about physical structure, right?
Yes, sir, and that, and that's where I thought Member Coza was going earlier, was just, you know, they can say they want to use that existing framing, that will have to be verified. I mean, this is no longer be an accessory, it'll be a hab, inhabited space, uh, where people work every day, and so it could have different construction requirements, along with meeting current windstorm.
That, I guess that's my question. Have y'all had an engineer look at this and see how you would build this and, and maintain that existing?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Right now, what you've got is a carport that's got eight support posts.
Correct, yes.
As an accessory building, and then you've essentially got a shed roof between the actual structure and the carport.
Right, we're looking to enclose it and make it, well, the, uh, in the pictures, to make it an actual freestanding structure, like a, a bay or garage.
We're gonna build it, we're gonna build it right. We're gonna have it engineered plans, we're gonna get it, you know, the windstorm approved, everything.
Okay, so, so let me.
We aren't that far yet, because we don't have permission yet, so we haven't created it yet.
Sure, sure, and, and I think what you're hearing from council, and, and I'll tell you myself, we want to get to a yes for you guys. Uh, we, we love the fact that you're improving a corner, that, that you're, you're improving an icon in the community. We want to get to a yes. Question is, how do we get to that yes? The reality is, when you go to actually build this structure, you're gonna have to tear all of that down. You're not gonna be able to use any of it. Uh, uh, that, that's my, that's my guess, because you're never gonna meet windstorm with four-by-four square.
With the metal legs and the.
Exactly. So when you take that down, then that middle roof covering is gonna come down also, because it's tied to it. So when you get into the actual construction of this, everything that's supported by those posts is gonna end up coming down. You might be able to do some temporary supports to hold up that middle structure.
So there's, so there's the possibility that everything will have to be tore down, and so then we are no longer locked into that side setback.
Exactly.
And just put it 10 feet where.
Exactly. And you still, you still get that left side as the bay that's enclosed, meets the setback, puts your lift in there. Basically, it just makes that middle part between the existing building, where the carport is, six feet, six feet narrower. But you get good quality structure, you meet engineering, you meet windstorm and all that kind of stuff.
Right.
So I think that's where you're gonna end up, when you actually get with an engineer and say, this is what you have to put in to be able to meet windstorm.
Right, and maybe we're, maybe all of us are a little too hung up on the existing structure, when actually that has to come down anyway.
I, I would, I mean, this is my world, right? In, in construction, so that's what I would expect to see when you actually get and start dealing with the windstorm engineers.
Our world is car repair.
Uh, understood, that's why I'm throwing it out there. I mean, we've, we've, we're kicking around a bunch of things here.
Yeah.
But at the end of the day, I don't see how you're gonna get, uh, staff engineer to give you structural engineering and get you windstorm engineering and use what you have. You're gonna end up taking.
I'm following you.
So. They still can't wall in B. It's the same deal, they're gonna have the same problem no matter what. Is, you're, you're trying to build a permanent structure, you're gonna have to build it to current code, and you're gonna have to meet windstorm. And that middle part, the, the picture from the, the main side of the road, from, from 35.
So I was gonna say, oh, can we go to the pictures real quick?
Correct, yeah, next, so right here, go, go back one without the yellow box, or, that's fine. When you look at it from 35, it looks like that center section, which would be B. It looks like it's a structure, but it just has a facade on the front to match the building, right?
Correct.
It's just a, when you see it from behind, it's just a shed roof. And it's held up by a ledger board against the building, and it's anchored to the posts, the carport on the other side.
You know, that, that's, those structures are actually, they're, they're pretty heavy-duty. I mean, it, it's, it's, it's pretty strong, it's not, it's not weak at all. It's, it's, it was, that structure was built.
Oh, oh, fair enough.
I had to, uh, guess, you know, it's probably windstorm-approved, I think.
Well, that, that's what I'm saying. And I would be a lot more comfortable saying yes to walling in what's there, if I know you can actually meet code.
Would it matter if, because are we talking about the, the reason that, that A is close to the property next door? Would it matter if I bought the property next door?
No, because you could turn around and sell it in the future, and you have the same, same issue, right? The whole, the whole idea of setbacks is to maintain some continuity and some character to the, to the area, right? So, I mean, I, I don't know if you would be willing to, to have a, an engineer just take a cursory look at it. I'm not saying go spend eight grand and have it fully engineered. Maybe have somebody take a cursory look at it and say, yes, there's a way to do this without tearing all this down.
Sure.
But if you're gonna have to tear it all down anyway, I'd rather see you, see you meet the setbacks, um, if you're gonna have to go that route, and I think that's where you're gonna end up.
Member Byram, that's what staff's perspective as well, is through the teardown, meet setbacks.
Remember Coza?
Okay, so to, to answer a few of your questions, Ricky, um, if you were to buy the property and you platted it all together, then at that point, you don't have setbacks. So, that, that is one option. The, the other thing that I did want to explain to you, because we were kind of talking amongst ourselves up here, is if we say, okay, we're, we're okay with doing B, but you go in front of ZBA, and it's a month from now, whatever the time period is, whatever that cycle is that gets you there, um, and you lose at ZBA. The only recourse you have is to sue the city and district court in Angleton, and file a lawsuit saying, this is why I have to be able to do this. So, I just want y'all to understand, it's not, it won't come back to us. You will go to Angleton if you want to pursue this. So it's a whole different deal, where it's not in our realm here. Um, so I just want to make sure that you're aware of the process.
It would be out of your hands at that point.
Oh, 100%, once you go to ZBA, it's a whole different animal. Um, so I want y'all to understand the process, uh, of how it works, that, that y'all are fully aware, whichever way we go with this.
Great, good follow.
Yeah, I would say, i- if you guys are willing to have somebody take that quick look at it, I would say, let's postpone this, let you have that conversation before we take a vote on it, and you end up having to go to ZBA and all that other kind of stuff.
Where I was headed.
And, and get somebody to take a look at that and see, can you really do it? Again, I think everybody's like, let's do it, let's just make it work.
Two weeks is your cheapest option.
Right.
Let's figure this out.
We not approve the use?
Can.
I mean, Vance is back there really trying to figure something out.
No, yeah, it's been a long night for everybody. Um, no, I'm just trying to find it, you know, to what end, on the, on the punt, as far as, I just want, I want it to be fast for them as well. And so, I'm trying to, in that said, I also know, and I think most of you would agree, you can pay an engineer until you can save anything with enough money. No, I can absolutely make that structure work.
He's gotta stamp it on him.
Oh, I, I find the stamps flowing. Um, no, I'll, I'll leave it to y'all's hands.
I, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, but.
Yeah, but I, we, we need to be practical, not send you off on a wild goose chase. Make sure we get it done.
Any, are y'all open for a postponement?
Sure, absolutely.
If you are to, to explore a little bit and bring it back, I'd be more than willing to make a motion to postpone.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, all right, well, I, I make a motion.
Let's get out of the public area.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor, one thing. Um, I know Matt Buchanan left already. Um, first of all, this, this is awesome, that you guys are actually spending the time and money into this townsite. And I don't know if you're aware, we are actually doing a, uh, we have a study for this area to bring it back to life. Are you aware of that?
Yes, I've, I, yes, I've read, I forget what it's called, but yes, I've read it.
Old Town Site.
It's online, Old Town Site, it's like 50 pages long.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
And so the reason I'm, I'm bringing that up to you, many moons ago, the Economic Development Corporation had a specific grant for the old townsite. And matter of fact, there was a repair shop we gave facade grant to. It was a dollar-for-dollar match, so it's 50% they had to spend, and the other 50% we gave them, the EDC, and it was up to a max dollar amount. That was there. I don't know if Tony remembers that. So, what I would suggest in this two weeks, that you're, don't consider it a downtime, I would consider to reach out to the EDC, Parallel Economic Development Corporation, is on the third floor here, and ask them that you are reinvesting in the old townsite. And where can you apply for a grant for your facade? This was the main purpose for that grant originally. So, it should help some of your hardship costs that you're incurring. Good luck.
If, if I could weigh in, because I, I actually drafted a lot of the, the grants that were associated with that program back then. A very different situation than what we're talking about right now, because those were, uh, grants that were, that could, uh, and through a very gray area, even at that time, qualify as site improvements. Uh, here, you're talking about actually building a private structure on their property, and, and as y'all know, the EDC funds are really generally typically utilized for, for infrastructure, things of that nature, that, uh, I mean, clearly.
It needs plenty of that, too.
But, uh, with respect to, to building a building on somebody's private property, and, because that's what we're really talking about. And we're not talking about facade here.
So, if you decide to improve your facade to your building, consider it, okay?
Okay.
Yes, there you go.
Mr. Car, Carbone?
Let's say that you, they go find engineering, engineer says, great, we can, we can use the current structure. They then come back here, we're then still having to send them to the ZBA with staff's recommendation that there's not a legal hardship. So I'd.
Yeah, only if they're using the structure that's closest to the property line.
Right.
If they use B.
Yeah.
They're good.
Yeah, so that's.
But ZBA is gonna also hear, if that's the scenario that we end up in, that P&amp;Z supports it and council supports it. They're gonna also have that information as well. You still have to meet the criteria authorized under state law and the UDC.
Yes.
In order to meet that hardship criteria.
ZBA is a whole different animal. Been there.
I mean, I understand.
So, what would happen if tonight we committed to modifying our plan and going with B? It, that would meet the setback?
Then you would be meeting staff's recommendations, and we could say yes and move on. They're still gonna have to do the building analysis.
Right, of course, we have to go through the whole building permit and make it wind-safe and flood-safe and electrically safe and all those things.
That gets you done here tonight, it takes a ZBA off the table, and you can go forth and do what you want.
He's the one that's gonna work on the thing, and he says yes, let's, let's do B instead of A.
If that's what the applicant wants, and if that's what city council wants, then, uh, staff would recommend that you adopt the CUP as presented with staff's proposed condition. They think that that gets.
That will suffice.
So we're saying that somehow we'll make it work, that we'll have the correct setback, whether that's we use B, or we just take the whole thing down and create the structure at that correct setback.
So if you wanted the longer building in the B area, you could do that.
Yeah, either, you're thinking B?
I'll make it work.
Okay. So will that take the, the zoning variance? That takes that off the table, and it could just be approved tonight, correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
Cleanest, that's the cleanest thing.
Yeah, it's the cleanest.
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna close this documented public hearing and move to new business item number four. Ms. Cade, put that on the table real quick with, with, uh, leave the. With the proposed, uh, staff condition on there. Just put it into your.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution number R2025-CUP2025-0453, with staff's recommended condition, so moved.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Um, we've had council input and discussion, as well as, uh, staff input. With that, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Fernandez?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Paton Byram?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Chavedia?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for the investment in the old townsite as well. Yeah, with that, we'll move to new business item number five. Mr. Fernandez, would you place that on the table, please?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, resolution number R2025-CUP2025-0343, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, quick staff report.
Why is you looking at me? All right, thank you. Uh, so, uh, Mayor, just to remind y'all, uh, this is, uh, the request that went through about the, uh, four duplexes proposed, uh, for the old townsite. We've worked with the applicant to discuss, uh, potential re, redraws, uh, for the site in order to, uh, maintain, uh, a reduced number of driveways, uh, as that is one of the, uh, impetuses to having a, a more walkable area, and what originally drew out, uh, that condition to, uh, utilize the alleys as the main, uh, main entry points, uh, for the garages. Um, so with that, I want to, uh, introduce the applicant again, as they do have, uh, a couple drawings that they want to run through, uh, and they've, uh, worked diligently to, uh, you know, come up with those alternatives to hopefully find a plan, uh, that can be approved tonight. Understand that a lot of these are still conceptual, uh, and that staff hasn't had time to do a full analysis and review on. Uh, so anything that gets approved tonight would be, uh, would still need to have work, uh, done to make sure that it meets, uh, all of the zoning criteria for, uh, the old town district itself. Um, but with that, I'd, I'd love to open it back up to, uh, the applicant to share their, uh, their study of the site.
One second. If you can ask him a question, so he can discuss. Or is he gonna?
Our goal is just to deliver a project that integrates into the existing neighborhood fabric and supports.
Go ahead and give, state your name for the record, that way we got it on the record. Thanks, thanks.
So we're just trying to build something that supports the envisioned walkable pedestrian oriented character of Grand Boulevard. To that end, we have prepared a few preliminary site plans, options that consolidate vehicular, uh, access. Uh, these options reduce the number of driveway curb cuts from four to one, or even two, thereby increasing conflict points, improving traffic circulation, and enhancing overall pedestrian safety along Boulevard. Uh, we've shown four different ways we can draw this to accommodate the parking and the, uh, the driveways, so. We've shown four different ways we can draw this to accommodate the parking and the driveways.
Okay, yeah, move the mic over.
Okay.
There you go.
So we think that's the biggest concern with building these has been the driveways and the parking. And so we've given a couple of different renderings to try to get this figured out.
Yeah, yeah, first off, I, I want to thank both of you for giving us the time to at least go through the exercise to see if the alleyways was feasible, practical. And even with some of the, the dastardly Texas law, it kind of gets in the way sometimes. So I, but I appreciate the time and effort to do that. And I think also just working with us to try to figure out future grand, that what we do today doesn't interfere with what future grand, you know, would be instead complement it. So I want to, I want to thank, I want to thank y'all for taking the time to do that. And I think we can hit on something that makes sense. Even in just kind of discussions of coming up with, you know, quadplexes as opposed to duplexes, if that gets you more units, but cuts down on, on the driveway cuts, but still has a product that the Old Town Site would thrive under, I think would make a lot of sense. So I want to thank y'all for giving us the opportunity to kind of go through this exercise. I do want to open it up for questions to council. You know, I, and I don't, because I told a couple staff members on Friday that if it were me, I would just cancel and go build my townhomes and be done with it. I mean, as a developer, I would have just said, that's what I'm gonna go do. So, so I know you have every, every ability to go and do that. And so the fact that you're here and still working with us is the reason why I'm thanking you. So I think it's important that we have that. So with that, I want to turn it over for questions and comments from, from council.
First of all, I'll echo what the mayor said. I appreciate that. You can always just kind of go and do, but whenever there's a partnership involved, I think it works a whole lot better and things go a whole lot smoother. Not, not particular fan of the, the original design, obviously, for the, the issues we talked about with multiple driveways, the length, parking, that I think I mentioned when you guys came in the first time, being concerned about where a car is gonna actually sit. I can pretty well envision option A and C. I can't quite see the product in my head of what option B is, that bottom left. Sorry, the record can't hear you. I can, but.
Brian Starr, 2818 Morrisey Street. So the, the option B down there was, they're actually triplexes, it's two one bedrooms and one, one two bedroom. So it came out to nine units. I was just playing around, making some stuff in, putting some options together.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that. I mean, I gave you my input. I like, if you're talking about three triplexes, that's kind of similar to what Baker's Landing kind of around the corner with those triplexes or with those four.
Four townhomes.
Quads, they're quads.
They're, they're sold townhomes. Still, to the point, you're getting nine units here versus eight. Nine units versus five townhomes or whatever it is, so.
If you're looking for direction, given that it's triplexes right there, and I'm sure you'll work with staff on elevations to, to make it an attractive product, I think I like that option the most out of these four personally.
I think, I think parking on it may be tough to get. No parking. No, I mean, I'm serious. That one, parking's gonna be tough to do.
Yeah, I mean, C would be another good option as well. Again, gets you more units than A. I think A's cutting.
Yeah, A is, A would be six units, three duplexes. Thing I like about A is it's a twenty-four foot wide street. Still be able to, people would be able to parallel park on the side. I mean, it would have place for guests to park.
You'd get six units out of that.
Yep.
Right? I mean, if that's what, I guess I should have started with that question. What do you like?
I mean, I like more, I like the first one we submitted.
Well, yeah, I understand that.
No, but, but out of these three options, I, I prefer A, to be honest. I think, I think it fits a lot better.
Okay. This one. Yeah, I mean, I'd be fine with that. I, I will tell you the same thing that I told staff earlier this week. If we can work with you guys on what type, I said this earlier this evening. I don't know why, but live oaks are just on my mind lately. They just tear things up after about twenty years.
They do.
If we can work with you guys on different trees, that'll work better and.
Whatever tree you want out there.
Well, we got restrictions and all that kind of stuff. Stuff that's not gonna tear up your driveways and your slabs in twenty years.
Hundred percent.
I'd be good with that, but if you're good with A, I like A.
I like A also, but the, the existing live oak that's with the, what is it, thirty-six or thirty-four inch, the big one?
Yep.
That one will stay though, right?
I don't know if that one will stay. I haven't, I haven't gone out there to check. I don't know if that one will be able to stay there. I think it's gonna be in the building there.
All right, thank you.
Yes. Mr. Coza?
Member Byrom asked the question I was gonna ask about which one y'all prefer. I'm completely fine with A if, if that's a workaround with y'all.
Yeah, I, I like A. I mean, I think out of these options, besides the original one, I think it's the best one.
Okay, I'd be on board with that as well.
Yeah, I don't see an issue with A. I'm kind of nervous that Vance and Martin are back there talking feverishly. How, how long have y'all had to see these? Pardon? Say that last part again. How long have y'all had to see these?
Oh, the same time you have.
Okay.
And, and that's what we were visiting about, is just trying to make the plating for A work. And so, you know, lots have to have furniture on the public ways and they have to be a certain size. And so just trying to work through it with, with everybody. But no, at the same time, we'd like to echo y'all's support and gratitude for their flexibility and willing to come to the table and, and work to find a product we all like.
I think the lot sizes are actually bigger on A than they are on the original one.
Vance, could it all be one reserve? That's, I mean, this is all rental property, so it could all be one reserve. Keeps it all together.
It, it becomes multifamily at that point. So trying to balance the uses allowed by right in this zoning district or by.
We were talking quadplexes, that's multifamily as well.
And it would have to come for a CUP.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you. I like A if we can make it work.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank y'all. Patience is the virtue here and you guys have had a lot of it and just appreciate that. I'm good with A. Y'all are happy with A. Hopefully, staff, we can work something and hopefully that works out. So to be continued, but I'm okay with A as well.
So Vance, real quick, well, Lawrence, real quick. So if we go with A, does our resolution meet it? What would need to be?
It, it's not gonna meet the, the resolution cannot be amended tonight because it would not have gone through the public hearing process for that product. The public hearing process that was provided was for two-family use within the Old Town mixed-use district to accommodate four two-family dwelling units. And that's not what's in front of you today.
Even though it's less units?
Don't know if this product would be allowed by right, so I think, yes, sir, even if it's not that. Because that's a zoning. You can, you can zone something less intense.
I know sometimes we can, we can make, we can make modest modifications at the table. This is actually lessening the number of units. That's why I'm questioning.
This is the first time I've seen it, Mayor. I, I would just say that for zoning, you could do a less dense thing. I don't know if you could do that for a CUP. I don't know if this fits within what's even allowed by a CUP in that zoning district. That would take a different level of analysis than what I have prepared for you tonight.
Could, could we make the amendment, vote on it, give them the green light, hopefully consensus from council, and if your research says it needs to come back, then you can bring it back at a future meeting and they can, they can move on?
So you would be delegating authority to staff, approve this use if it's allowed by?
I, I would, I would, I would say that we would amend this to, to read two-family use or to accommodate three two-family dwelling units. And then if you do your legal homework and in two weeks you decide, no, it needs to run back through the process, you can run it back through the process. In the meantime, we've given them the, the nod from council that it's gonna move forward.
Right. So it would be a contingent approval upon?
No, I'm saying we approve it. You find out a way to make it happen. But if you can't clear that legal threshold, you bring it back.
Which is why I'm suggesting it has to be a contingent approval. I don't have a mechanism to bring it back to you once you've approved it. However, if you wanted to approve it tonight, contingent on a legal analysis that this could be a CUP code compliant product, then I think that that would work.
If it marks that it's not, but you have approval from council for this, now you know coming back through the process where we're at.
And I would add to that, no matter how it comes back or how it gets approved, we don't hit them up for another fee.
Right. All right. Any other questions, comments? Okay, so we have a motion, yeah, so we have a motion on the table. Mr. Carbone, can you offer an amendment to this? I, I give it a shot, Mayor. I'll make a motion to amend to change the language to accommodate three two-dwelling, two-family use dwelling units contingent on legal staff. Everybody else in City Hall getting comfortable with it. So moved.
Second.
We have motion, a second. You have a quick question on that?
Yeah, do we have to change the language on the four separate platted lots also? Do we need to change that to a single reserve?
We don't know yet.
Okay. That would be part of the contingency.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, good deal. All right, we have a motion, a second to amend. So let's vote on the motion to amend. Madam Secretary, call for that vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Chavdia?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Fernandez?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Byrom?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, so now we have an amended motion on the table. Last call for questions. Seeing none, let's vote on the amended motion.
Member Fernandez?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Byrom?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Chavdia?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, thank you guys again for working with us. I think we're a step closer. Let's get over this threshold. If not, let's get back, let's knock it out so you guys can keep going.
Perfect.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate y'all's help.
Good deal. All right, with that, we'll move to new business item number six. Mr. Patel, would you place that on the table, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Considering possible action, resolution number R 2025-192. So moved, second.
We have a motion, a second, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I finally get to present an item tonight. I want to thank our representatives from Ardua and McCarthy for hanging out with us tonight. And we'll make this quick, hopefully. So Mayor, this item establishes the third and final guaranteed maximum price for the Berry Rose and Longwood Project. This GMP includes the force main from the Longwood lift station to the Berry Rose plant. Demo of some of the old infrastructure, FF and Eve, finishes furnishing and equipment, commissioning landscaping and a few other various items. The results of the proposals that were received in August that were evaluated by McCarthy, our owner's rep, Ardua and the city. The project is on schedule with work from GMP number one, about sixty-five percent complete, GMP two fifteen percent complete. And the final completion is still scheduled for April twenty-eighth. And with the execution of GMP number three tonight, the project, it will lock in that final guaranteed maximum price within our budget. So we recommend approval of the contract amendment to add GMP number three to the contract with the, the C-Mark contract with McCarthy in the amount stated in the agenda item of just over twenty-three point two million dollars. Thank you, Mayor.
There we go. Throw it open for questions, comments, concerns from council?
Oh. Trent, when is the final completion date for all three projects?
April twenty-eighth, we should be completed and, and have everything wrapped up.
Of twenty twenty-six?
Twenty-eight.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
We're two and a half or almost two and a half years away, so. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Coza?
Yeah, I was just looking through here. What does that put the total amount for the whole project? That's what I was trying to.
Total amount is two sixteen, two million, I'm sorry, two hundred and sixteen million, four hundred and fifty thousand, twenty-nine dollars.
And that's the construction itself, the C-Mark contract.
Correct.
Correct, just the construction aspect. All right, thank you.
Deal. Last call, CNNO. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Byrom?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Chavdia?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Fernandez?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, with that, we'll move forward in the agenda. Other business, there is none. Mayor, council issues for council, city council discussion, there are none. Do have an executive session under Texas Government Code, section five five one point zero seven four, deliberations regarding the annual performance evaluation of the municipal court judge. With that, council will recess and exec session at ten fifty.
Council returned from executive session at 11:30 PM. Moving to new business, continue consideration of possible action regarding the annual performance evaluation municipal judge. Mr. Carbone, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we accept the judge's retirement effective immediately.
Okay. We have a motion of second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Chavedia.
Aye.
Member Cade.
Aye.
Member Fernandez.
Aye.
Member Patel.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Byrom.
Aye.
Member Coza.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
With that, we'll move to adjournment at 11:31.
These lift stations are at ninety percent design and should be this year. And the Dixie Farm Lift Station has design completed and have a bid opening scheduled for July of this year. I now pass over to Ms. Rachel.